Please, I want to obviously start by welcoming everybody to our quarterly workshop. We're really glad to have fellow commissioners here and to have the guests that are here with us. I do want to take a moment and recognize Dr. Lisa White, President of Austin Peay State University. We really appreciate you being here this afternoon with us. With that, I'll turn it over to Russ Eaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me also extend welcome to everyone. It's not been that long since we convened in November. This is a quick turnaround, so glad everyone has made it through the snow and is back with us. Do want to note the absence of Joe Di Pietro. Katie Highes here in his stead. Thank you for being here, Katie. Dr. Di Pietro has had a back injury, I understand, and we wish him speedy recovery and hope he's watching somewhere, at least if not today, at least for tomorrow, so.
He had a procedure Monday. Do I need to do something?
You're on. Yeah, you're.
And it was successful, and they have told him to rest for a little while and let it heal, so we'll see how that goes. His fingers are not resting, I've noticed.
But we do wish him a speedy recovery. We have a full agenda today and tomorrow. Some of the items that we'll show you today, we will be, as a staff, recommending to you. We placed them on a consent agenda for tomorrow, rekindling that practice. Of course, today is also the occasion for the joint meeting with the State Board of Education at 3:30 with Dr. Sarah Hayburn. We look forward to that as well. That's been occurring for a long time, that joint meeting, a good chance to come together and talk about issues of common interest across K-12 and higher education. A lot has happened in higher ed the last two months since we convened. We will talk about some of that in the next day and a half. Needless to say, I think that the next few years will be very eventful and impactful in higher education, and we look forward to that challenge. Without further ado, we'll jump right into the agenda items, and first on your agenda are two master plans. And in a moment, I'll ask Mr. Neil Kessler, one of the principals at Smith Group JJR, which is an architect, engineering, and planning firm, to present both the University of Memphis Master Plan and the Southwest Tennessee Community College Master Plan. By way of a segue here, of course, master planning is one of the integral functions the commission performs. We ask institutions about every five years or so to revisit their long-range planning, their long-range thinking about how that campus looks, both from an academic, a programmatic perspective, and a physical plant perspective, the actual layout of the campus. Most of those plans are up to date, and it's always exciting when you see fresh thinking about how a campus envisions itself going forward, and these two plans today embody that. And so we're excited to bring them to you. These not only help set the vision for everything from property acquisitions, but to thinking about the size and scope of a student body, and again, its relationship with the layout of the campus. And so these are very important to both campus leadership as well as the commission as well. So with that, let me ask Mr. Kessler to come forward and present these plans, and these will be in sequence, I assume, Memphis then Southwest.
Yeah.
And then we can take questions, perhaps, if you don't mind, during the presentation, of course afterwards, and then staff, again, will be recommending this for the consent agenda tomorrow. So with that, Mr. Kessler from Smith Group JJR, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for the welcome, and thank you for having me here today. It is my pleasure. This has been two years of my life devoted to these two fantastic institutions. I am proud to represent both of them today, University of Memphis and Southwest Tennessee Community College. We were given the unique opportunity, I think, to envision with a higher education system in a North American city, which I think is a fantastic opportunity, from the community college all the way through the four-year institution. And so we wanted to make sure that we looked at these individually and gave them a lot of attention, which you will see, but also look at ways that we can link those in a little bit better way, and what are the synergies that we can realize through this master planning process. And so I'll touch on that primarily after the break in the two. So what I'd like to do is, I am spending about a half an hour here, 20 minutes or so, on the University of Memphis. Pause for any questions. Certainly, if there are any questions that are very pressing, bring them up to me as well. But then we'll look at Southwest after that for about 10 minutes. So let's start with the University of Memphis. This is what we'll go through today, is just a little bit on the process. We'll talk about the master plans because it's essentially, we looked at all of the locations at the University of Memphis, which I'll touch on, and then how, we wanted to create a vision for campus, so a bold vision of where we wanted to go, but we also wanted to make it realistic. How could we give the university steps to actually realize the master plan? So that will be the last piece. So as I said, this was a comprehensive master plan, looked at all the locations at the University of Memphis. Certainly, the main campus, the Park Avenue campus, and the Lambeth campus in Jackson were the primary places to look. We also looked at all the other elements as well. This was an update to a master plan, so a lot of planning had occurred in the past, and we wanted to make sure that we brought that in. But we know higher education changes a lot, so we wanted to make sure that we really took, you know, deep dive and fresh look at the plan as well. It provides both a long-range vision and the way to get the projects done, so hopefully that comes through. Fantastic process in terms of student and faculty and staff involvement. This is one of the, sort of, the bright spots of this campus, is how everybody came out and supported the plan and gave their input. It was a great process. We talked to thousands of people at lots of workshops. It was just great to see the energy that was on campus by everybody involved. It was very comprehensive. It wasn't just the physical layout of facilities, which certainly is an important part of this, but we looked at the space utilization, we looked at the student housing, we looked at both way they're utilizing their classrooms, the laboratories, the offices, and then what the needs were in the future. So we looked at growth horizons for enrollment growth, what that was going to mean for space. So when we say we need new facilities, we can actually have data that backs it up. Student housing, dining, we had an entire parking master plan done in great detail, both qualitative and quantitative data for facilities assessment, so the outside envelope of the buildings, the systems, but also what is the quality of the spaces that we're bringing our students through. And then a whole series of design guidelines, which goes to the implementation. That makes up the entire master plan. We set up a series of guiding principles that we could always test the master plan against as we went through the process. A number of these were carryovers from the last master plan, but about half of them were sort of reworked and rethought as we wanted to have a new direction for this master So looking at the three, we'll start with the main campus. And we had a whole series of, there's, obviously, the campus master plan is very complicated with a lot of moving parts, but it's really kind of distilled into a number of these very important elements. Repurposing of space, parking, student life, student services, housing, what to do with some of the needs, especially in terms of music and performance space on campus, which there is a specific need for, and then how to tie it together with open space. I mentioned the space planning metrics that we used, and we took a very deep dive into this to understand where, how we're using our space, and then what sort of space we are going to need in the future. And so we have an entire document of data that is an inch thick, that goes into every single building and every single classroom, and shows how we're using it and what our needs are in the future based on our enrollment projections. And so we have a lot of data here, which I won't go into now. I'm happy to answer any questions that might come of this. But it really guided all of our decisions moving forward in the master plan, so that we weren't just guessing. One of the important elements was to take all this data, these individual studies, and actually overlay them, and it told us some really kind of interesting things. That was, we had a number of these studies where we overlaid that looked at building age, and what we found was that over 70% of the facilities at University of Memphis are over 40 years of age. It's the oldest building stock in the Tennessee Border Region system, and that alone is not that telling. However, we also looked at the buildings in the red, which are, we talked about as being our heritage buildings. Those are the first buildings on campus. We want to make sure that we create great facilities out of those. We don't want to lose those. But we also started to overlay the building classroom utilization and then the building condition. And what was interesting was, we found that the buildings that have the stripe, the black on top of them and the bold black outline are buildings that have, are in our worst condition on campus, and the buildings that have the most students going through them. So what we found was, and I think it was an eye-opener, that we are bringing our, most of our students through our worst buildings. And I think it was, what we found is it was affecting the recruitment, retention of students. So when we start to make decisions about where we're going to invest in the future and where we might want to not invest future dollars, we started to use the data that we were collecting to make some of those decisions, and you'll see those as I move We also looked at places that we wanted to have major renovations. Certainly, there's lots of renovations in many and most of the buildings, but the major ones of the administration building, and especially some space that's not being used in an old auditorium in that building, we think that we can use that for classroom space. The McQuarter Library, we're looking at turning that more into a learning commons rather than just storage of books, so opening up and making it a place for study, that students can come together, not such a fortress of books, but more of a place for people to come together and learn. I apologize if I offended any librarians out there. And then we looked at land acquisition. Much of what we were able to do in this master plan is to create space on existing property at the University of Memphis. However, we have some strategic targets that we're looking at, especially to the west, toward Highland Avenue, to create a better presence in that neighborhood. We went out in the community, this was, and talked this through a lot. This is part of a larger master planning effort for Highland Avenue, and it's gotten a lot of support from the neighbors as we walked through that. So this was the, this is the existing University of Memphis campus, primarily looking at between Central and Walker and Patterson in the area that is right in here, and really starting to look at where we can better utilize land. So you will notice that up on the north side of campus, where we have a large parking, and south side, where we have a large parking area, and then the west side, that's where we started to make some, I think, some interesting places on campus. And so as you see it transforming into what the final master plan is, and I'll go through the neighborhoods one by one as we walk through this, but what we're trying to do is utilize our land the best that we can, so that we don't have to go out continually. As we grow population on campus, we don't have to always continually grow out. And so we'll talk through some of those projects as we walk forward. So we looked at, just generally identified some districts on the campus, and I'll walk through each one a little bit. One is, we'll start right here in the center, McQuarter Library. This was a big move, and it's not, it's not something, it was kind of a holdover from a previous master plan, because right now is the Herzog Building, and that's where all the services of campus are. So we're bringing all of our trucks and maintenance equipment and everything right to the center of campus, the 100% point, really, where there's students moving back and forth. That's the core of where the students are moving, and we're, so we're bringing a lot of vehicles into the center. That doesn't make sense. So we're looking at moving all of those facilities out onto the perimeter, and then reimagining a new academic building here in the core that really starts to bring everybody together at the center of campus. I also talked about the library as being, looking at that as a, I apologize, what's going on here? As a, as a learning commons. As we move south, we're the university center in the administration building. I mentioned some of those buildings that were our worst buildings and are in our worst condition, that we were bringing most of the people through. A lot of the humanities and some of the sciences, Mitchell, Clement, Ellington, which are right in here. And so we looked at, rather than spending more money on minor intrusions into those buildings and spending good money after bad, it actually made better sense to start new projects of reinventing those buildings and having much better learning environments for our students, much better places to teach, more inspiring places. So looked at a way that we could systematically take buildings down, rebuild, and so it's a realistic way that we can make that happen, one small building at a time through the center of campus. You will also see that this pedestrian bridge is a project, and I'll go into that in a minute, but that would really help to anchor this really central open space on campus and create a really, a magnet on campus for students, faculty, and staff alike. On the north side of campus, again, it's currently just a parking lot, and we, while it looks like we're taking away parking spaces, we're actually creating more parking spaces in the master plan, but we're not doing it in such a concentrated way in surface parking. So looking at the inn here on the corner, we are looking at an alumni center and a music center. The music center is a substantial need on campus. They've outgrown their current space, and they need specialized space for academic theater uses. And then creating a parking garage here, which could serve both the Holiday Inn, the Alumni Center, and the Music Center on the north side of campus. Sort of on the south and east corner, where what we'd look at is a research corridor. The University of Memphis has significant research goals, so looking at trying to concentrate research on campus. And so in this location currently is a campus school and ball hall, School of Education. Those both have significant issues with them, and in terms of the campus school, it brings a lot of traffic into a, into a part of campus that's difficult to get to and creates a lot of problems several times a day. So I'll show you where that goes in a moment, but what allows us to do is to create a science sort of quad here, and then engineering up here and adding a new science and engineering research facility. And then right in the center, Phase 1 and 2 of interdisciplinary research facilities, so that they can be shared by science and engineering, and really create Zach Curran as a research corridor on campus as well. As we move south, this, I think, has probably the biggest impact on what we're looking at in terms of student life. Currently, the Student Recreation Center is down on, far south, on Spotswood, and everyone sort of thinks of the railroad tracks in Walker as the edge of campus, and, but we have several thousand parking spaces down in the south and asking students to cross probably one of the busiest railroad tracks anywhere. It's a dangerous situation. So which is the reason for the pedestrian bridge, having the Student Recreation Center, the new facility, up next to campus, so it really feels like there is a connection to campus? A multimodal facility, parking garage, also bus and bicycle facility there here. And then looking at education in the campus school, moving from this area down to this area, the campus school being much easier to access by people in, both on the university and in the community. And Ball Hall for replacement as the School of Education, one of the flagship institutions at the University of Memphis, looking at locating very close to the campus school because the synergy is located there. On the west side, looking at Patterson, which is now currently a divide, make, trying to make that into a seam that ties the main part of campus with this expansion area. Looking at potentially, as we move forward and the needs arise, we start to look at, trying to make a connection with Highland. And the developers are really helping us out with developing upperclassman housing, which is great, and we are reinventing our student housing on campus. New facilities that are just up and open this year here, and potential facilities that are, that might go in here. Those are all things that the university is doing to try and create a better campus environment for students. And then looking, the entire thing is, the entire campus really then sits within this larger district of the Highland and Walker Avenue planning districts, those, we incorporated all those plans into this, so there really feels like it is a university that, within a community. These are just some sketches that we were doing about some of the open spaces and enhancements that might happen in the future with, if we can open up the library and we have this beautiful oval and ellipse, which doesn't really get used, but if we can actually enliven those spaces a little bit, this just shows some of those, some of those ideas into the future. All right, quickly, looking at Park Avenue and what some of those issues are. We have a fantastic piece of property south of campus. It's a great asset for the university and an old VA hospital. Currently, it is half athletics and half, little bit of a lot of different things. And so looking at what is the best use for that, and I think what we came up with as a campus was that this would be sort of a health sciences, athletics, and community outreach campus focused. But we wanted to come up with a master plan that would guide the future. We don't have a lot of program that needs to go down there at the moment, but we wanted to make sure that we gave it a framework that we could grow into as needs started to arise. So what we've done is to try and create a balance of parking and open space and square feet that is balanced, so that we are creating enough parking to serve the needs of the facilities. We understand what the capacity of that site is, and we were actually able to get a project to test this master plan right off the bat with the basketball training facility, which we cited here. We tested a number of places and look at what that is here. We've got a number of athletic facilities, indoor practice facility for football, which is, is in the plan as well. So it becomes sort of athletics on one side and a future campus facilities on the other. Community Health Building, which just opened up a year ago here, so we keep those facilities, but the rest of it, in a phased way, sort of turns back into a fantastic resource for campus. And then lastly, at the University of Memphis, looking at Lambeth. We acquired that piece of, or that campus from Lambeth University, and when we acquired it, it had a lot of issues. And the university has done a fantastic job of very quickly trying to resolve those issues of ADA and drainage and lighting and a lot of other issues, and I think we're, we've come a long way, but there's still work to be done. And as we grow on campus, we wanted to see what the target headcount would be, looking at about 2,500 students maximum out here on this campus, is what we think it can support with the amount of building space and parking that we might be able to have on campus. So this is the existing campus. It's, if you've all been there, it's a lovely scale, and I think we want to keep that. It's a, it's a really beautiful space on that campus. And so really, it, what it is, is it's really trying to renovate those facilities that we can renovate, and we've done a lot of work already in a lot of these facilities to get them to what we'd like to see at the University of Memphis. Still, as I say, lots of work to be done, but as nursing grows, maybe moving that out and into its own building, taking sciences and moving it into a science facility, so that we can, we can have quality science facilities. These are far too old and sort of difficult to renovate as science facilities. Student housing on campus and working with the library and union to really make those fantastic places, as well as the Fworth Building replacement, where we might be able to have some community outreach and administrative facilities. Some property acquisition there and disposition of a lot of the small residential facilities around the campus. So that's generally the idea of the plan, but how we get there is another issue. So we've come up with, and I, believe me, you don't need to read this, but it is a lot of data of the, of project description, the, what phase generally it might fall into, what planning horizon it might fall into, estimated project costs, and then possible capital funding sources, so that, and it's an interactive spreadsheet that campus can use to sort of prioritize projects as they come up. I think a very useful tool to use. And then we have done a phasing plan that shows not necessarily what year things happen, but what you have to do on campus in order to make projects happen. And so we've got pages of sort of ways to, roadmaps on how to get projects done on campus. That's all in the master plan document, which is, which is on the website, which will be on the website. So that is the University of Memphis. Certainly, I can pause at the moment and see if there are any questions before I move into Southwest Tennessee Community College, and otherwise, we can move in there and then try and have the question at the end.
Yes, I suppose when I read the plan, and I know nothing about the Memphis campus, but I was looking at enrollment projections, and obviously, your plan is based on enrollment. The thing that surprised me was the juxtaposition, I suppose, of the growth enrollment projections for your community college versus the main campus of 6,000 and 2,000 in the community college. I would have surmised from afar that we would be projecting much stronger growth in the community college than the main campus. Does anybody have some thoughts on why that would be the case? We have a 6,000 growth projected on the main campus and only 2,000 on the community campus. Based on the investment the state's making, I would have thought it'd be the reverse of
Actually, I think that the community college has significant growth opportunity in the plan. I can, when we get into that, we, I mean, can look at that, too?
I was just looking at the numbers projected in the thing. It said 2,000 for the community campus and 6,000 for the main campus.
And those were numbers given to us by each campus?
Okay.
So that's, we can, we, you know, we can take what we're given and understand that there's a lot of work and a lot of, as you know, a lot of hopes and dreams in some of those numbers as well. So we were just accommodating what was each. So we were just accommodating what was each campus.
That was a given to you.
Yeah.
Enrollment growth from Southwest last year, I'm hoping, in good Dr. Rota fashion, people behind me know the answer, but it's probably negative. Yeah, exactly. Well, I do know the long-term trend has been down, and first person to Google this correctly will win a prize.
I have a chart that shows that, actually.
Even better, then. But it's, but your point, yeah, yeah. It sure could be, yeah, yeah. And that's over a, probably over a, how long a time period are we talking about, two, 10-year period?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Its maximum enrollment was once, was once around 13,000.
Back in 2010.
Right. Exactly. As community colleges and recessions go well together.
May I ask you about the local neighborhoods and, because a lot of the plan does, there's some close interactions there. What kind of input did you guys get from local, the neighborhoods, local community? And what was their reaction? How do they feel about this?
Yeah, we actually, we actually went out and reached out into the community in each stage of the process. So when we were doing our fact-finding and our sort of understanding, we went out and heard their concerns of what was happening. We then went out and shared alternatives and then shared the plan with them. And the acquisition of land coming to the west, I think, has been on their sort of mind for many years. They understand that that's happening. I think they're not only accepting, I think they're sort of pleased with the direction that that's going. That's what we've heard. There are some little issues, obviously, with any university and community, but I think that the university and community now, through these efforts and other efforts that the university is taking, undertaking, is probably as good as it's been in a long time. So I think that they are on board with what we see here.
Actually, it's been a model concept that you guys, we actually, in Memphis, there is...
Strong community activism in Memphis, and the university realizes that and wants to take a part in, you know, in playing a role in being a great neighbor, so.
Just to cycle back about the enrollment growth, I think it's worth bearing in mind that University of Memphis is more than twice the size of Southwest Community College. So it's not, it's not that surprising that the enrollment growths are, or at least maybe a factor of two different, that isn't so surprising. But I agree, it's, to some degree, to exactly gauge how it is that these institutions are going to grow over the next decade is...
I was really interested in driving that.
Certainly, we can still answer questions that you might, that might come up through the next presentation. But, so what I'll look at now, and I'll spend a little bit of time on Southwest Tennessee Community College. And again, going through the process, a little bit of space guidelines and the campus plans. Once again, we looked at all of the locations here, certainly the two main ones being Making Cove and Union Avenue, an emerging new facility at Maxine Smith, and then all of the others smaller. Did I do something? Watch it for a long time, so it went to sleep, maybe. All right. Back in business. So we looked at all of these, the centers here, as well as the two campuses. Those two campuses were at one time separate institutions that were married together. There's still small vestiges of that, but I think they're overcoming that and it really becoming one institution now, which is good to see. And even over a one-year, one-and-a-half-year timeframe that we were working there, I saw a lot more of that as we moved on. So that was good. These are some of those numbers that I think some of the people were asking about earlier, and these are enrollment projections. You see, here's the line of the, where we not quite are today, but where we were at the planning, at the end of our planning process. This is their sort of growth curve for headcount and for full-time FTE. And so you can see when the recession was happening in '09, '10, where we were very high in enrollment at 13,000 students, and then now we're back down to 10,000 and change. A lot of the things that the university was doing, I think, in terms of getting enrollment up and looking at preparing students better for university or college life, has led them to a fairly steep enrollment projection. And we tested actually three different enrollment projections and talked through them pretty extensively. This is what they chose, and they chose a fairly aggressive growth. And so we wanted to accommodate that in the future. What that shows, though, when we go through the project, is not a growth in facilities because our campuses are designed for somewhere around 13,000 students. We have quite a bit of growth potential for enrollment, to accommodate enrollment in the facilities that we have on those campuses, and you'll see that. We also did an environmental scan, looking at jobs growth to see, to make sure that we are testing those enrollment projections and making sure that the jobs growth matched some of that enrollment. And so a lot of these did support some of that enrollment growth, that the jobs in the two counties were moving, were moving in the upward direction. So again, like I said, we wanted to test the alignment between University of Memphis and Southwest Tennessee. Southwest Tennessee Community College is the largest feeder of the University of Memphis, and so it really makes a lot of sense to somehow bring those two together. And so we were looking at programmatic alignment, making sure that those programs aligned so that there was easy transition between the two, and program growth. We think a visible presence on that campus in the university center on both Making Cove and Union Avenue would make a big difference in students realizing that they can move forward into the University of Memphis. I think we, the University of Memphis, could capture a lot more students if that was the case. And then our regional partnerships. There's a lot of detail behind these, but looking at ways that we can tie the two together and make a better, a better team. And I think that that has happened the last couple of years, and it continues to happen, but we can make it better, I think. We looked at space utilization guidelines from a lot of different places, and obviously THEC has their guidelines that we used. You can see on the keys, these are each university, each campus and center. And here is the guideline, this is our average for all of our campuses. And here's the THEC guidelines. So you can see for classroom utilization, we have a lot of growth potential in our existing facilities. We aren't using them up to their potential. Teaching labs, it's better. So starting to look at the physical nature of campus and how we can accommodate that. This is Making Cove. It's a little bit more suburban. It was State Technical Institute at Memphis. It has now turned into the Making Cove Campus. Many brand-new facilities, a great new library, new classroom buildings. There are some older buildings here that are not great and need to be, something needs to be done with those. But what we did is we looked at the classroom and teaching lab utilization, and as I said, with lots of growth potential in the existing facilities. They're not going to need new facilities as we move forward. They can accommodate their, even their high rate of growth potential that they'd like to see, they can accommodate that with the existing facilities that they have in general. More numbers that just show, prove that out. And then the framework plan just goes to show where you might in the future. These are not necessary now, buildings are not necessary, but how you might grow. We never know where we're going to go, never know what sort of facilities we might need, programs that we might offer that we don't today. So looking at ways that we can grow, potential for bringing athletics onto campus. We also looked at various other locations and using the facilities that we currently do off-campus. We looked at just one basic piece of property acquisition that we'd like to see there. In terms of the Union Avenue campus, that one has some really interesting potential in terms of the health sciences and nursing, the center that's there, and the fact that it's located right there in downtown, and it's next to the University of Tennessee Medical Center, there's some great synergies there. Mostly, this has to do with the physical nature of some of the facilities and parking that's located a fair distance and busy roads away from the center of campus. And so looking at ways that we can create a safer environment for our students in that downtown environment. Classroom, teaching lab utilization numbers, again, support the fact that we have enough growth potential here in our facilities to accommodate an enrollment growth. But looking at the fact that with, we have a new nursing building here, perhaps bringing allied health at some point up to the center of campus and creating more of a synergy with University of Tennessee and all of those elements there might make a lot of sense. Currently, there's an entry here, which people think is the entry to campus, but it really just ends up at childcare. So we want to try and make that a little clearer, be more welcoming at Southwest. So looking at ways we can accommodate that. And then eventually, you know, looking at what some of the potential is to create new facilities, maybe there are opportunities for eventually in the long term where we might want to look at property acquisition. We prioritize these in, you know, the highest priority and to lowest priority. And then looking at the centers, again, you know, there's, there's, this is a brand-new facility here at Whitehaven. Maxine Smith is a brand-new facility, fantastic resource, and is pretty well-used by both the community and by the students, well-scheduled. And then the Gill Center is challenged, I think, and there's going to be a time when I think the Southwest needs to determine whether or not Gill Center still is part of the, of the college. There are, it was, it was once a school that now there's some movement labs and things like that in the gym. There's, there's not much teaching that goes on out there. There's, the enrollment is quite low. I think it's less than 900, even less than that, students. So I think it's, I think it serves a purpose, but I think at some point, I think we need to determine whether or not that becomes, that still stays part of the campus. So some of the, some of the space needs, what you'll see is that Whitehaven, Maxine Smith, and Gill Center, none of those have any space deficit moving forward. There are some specific things that we've recommended that they may want to change and renovate and turn into something else, classroom sizes, things like that, but essentially, we have enough space. So that is University of Memphis and Southwest Tennessee Community College. Are there any questions about either Southwest or University of Memphis? As I say, it was a fantastic opportunity. It was an exciting time to look at the entire higher education system, and it told us, sort of taught us a lot about what the potential is in Memphis.
From the staff perspective, and we have thoroughly reviewed these as well and had presentations made to us, we recommend them for approval and concur with these quite a bit. I want to commend TBR as well for aligning these. That's, I don't think, has been done before, and I think can serve as a template for future partnerships with schools in proximity. So that's important, both from a facility standpoint and a programmatic standpoint. So I commend TBR for doing so. And again, staff, Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend these for consent tomorrow. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask Crystal Collins to come to the podium to talk about the revised operating budgets? These, of course, this is the biannual review of the very high-level operating budgets that we do, looking for long-term trends, longitudinal trends, broad patterns in how campuses both receive their money and how they spend their money. Again, we do these twice a year, once in July and once here halfway through. So with that, Crystal, let me ask you to walk us through those.
Great. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Deaton, members of the commission. I'm very excited to be in front of you today to talk about the revised operating budgets for 2015-16. All this information I discussed today, as well as additional information, is in Tab 1C in your notebook. So a lot of this is going to be aggregated at a very high level, but we have it disaggregated by institutions there for you. Let's start with a brief reminder of what happened in November. As Dr. Deaton said, it hasn't been that long, but in anticipation of the governor's budget being released, just a brief reminder of what we requested and what you approved back in November for 16-17. We did ask for $40.9 million in new operating funding for our outcomes formula units and our TCATs. This represents about a 4.7% increase over 15-16, and we've coupled that with a 0% to 3% tuition rec to try and address some affordability issues. We're also, we did also ask for about $28.6 million in funding for the Tennessee Student Assistance Award, which is our need-based state award, as well as $15.7 million for our non-formula units. And lastly, the $800,000 for our Outcome Improvement Fund. This is going to be a competitive grant, we hope, if we receive funding for institutions, for our formula institutions who are having some issues within the outcomes-based funding formula, to maybe provide some opportunities for them to ramp up some projects that would help them increase their outcomes. Just briefly, a reminder of capital as well. The first project, our overall number-one project as recommended, was for the $10 million Drive to 55 Program Capacity Fund. This came out of the Governor's Task Force that met over the summer, looking at identifying, again, through a competitive grant process, some opportunities for institutions to ramp up some programs in order to meet the needs, workforce development, and the Drive to 55. We see this as non-building program capacity, so not actual bricks and mortar, but more like growing the size of your engineering college or buying some equipment for your mechatronics lab. Additionally, we did ask for $369.4 million for eight new buildings and some renovations. Four of these projects were at TBR, four of them at UT. And each one of these projects has a match component, which we've talked about before. Now, looking at some longitudinal finance trends, we do like to put these slides in front of you quite often because we do think of them as very important. This is just looking at what the revenue mixture looks like for our institutions. It's looking specifically at universities and thinking of what revenue per FTE, so for better or for worse, per student, looks like at our universities over the last 30 or so years. And these are all inflation-adjusted, so this next series of slides are all inflation-adjusted. Obviously, you can see this is for state appropriations, divestment and state appropriations per FTE at our universities over the last 30 or so years, from a high in the mid-'80s of about $11,500 per FTE, and we're down to about $5,000 per FTE at this point. What does that look like compared to... What does that look like compared to student fees less grant aid? And what this means, we think of this as a proxy measure almost for student out-of-pocket costs. So we take the tuition and fee revenue generated at our campuses, at our universities, and we remove any sort of grant aid that those students received. So thinking of that as sort of an offset that students receive towards the tuition and fee revenue, and then just really looking at what they're paying out of pocket. And what we see here is, especially in the last three or four years, a pretty big increase. And mostly, this is due to several factors. Obviously, our institutions, our universities, continue to rely on that tuition and fee revenue in order to meet the operating requirements and needs at the campuses, but also, the buying power of grant aid is starting to wane because it's not keeping up with this growth. So as an example, the lottery scholarship has not increased. In fact, it's gone down at universities to fund promise. And so, what does that mean for our students? These purple bars here look at that grant aid, and again, this does not include loans. We're just thinking of things that students don't have to pay back, right? So TSAA, Pell, and the Tell Scholarship. You can see it was relatively low through the mid-80s, the early 2000s. Where it started to increase was when we created the lottery scholarship. That happened in 2003, or at the end of 2004, and so you start to see it in '04, '05, and it increased, but it's stagnated over the last four or so years.
I have one question.
Yes.
Would that grant aid include private grant money, or is this only federal and state dollars?
Only federal and state dollars, yes. So we don't have any institutional scholarships. It's a very hard thing to aggregate at the state level, and so, we only look at what we're able to pull for the state. So this is looking at the, this is a lot of bars, but this is looking at the red, the red bar is mostly is what is of interest. So this is, if you were to add all of these together, what does our total revenue per FTE at universities look like? And over the last 30 years, it's been relatively stable. Now, the composition, as we just discussed, has changed a lot, but it's relatively stable. From 1986, and inflation-adjusted at dollars, about $15,500 per FTE, and then this year, the most recent year, 14-15, it's about $16,500 per FTE. So not that different. Now, if you were to compare this to what our universities are doing with their revenue compared to awards, so the number of degrees that they're awarding, we actually have seen a decline over the last 30 or so years. Now, again, with our revenue per FTE, obviously, the combination or the mixture of where those revenue dollars, where those operating dollars are coming from, is very different. The green bars here include grant aid, so this would be anything related to tuition and fee revenue. But we are seeing a trending downward, so while the revenue per FTE has stayed relatively flat over 30 years, institutions have begun to produce more awards with that relatively flat revenue per student. Okay, moving on to our revised operating budgets for 15-16. Institutions are required to report operating budgets to us for July 1, which are proposed, which you see in July, and then also for revised, which are from October 31. Just going over that briefly, what institutions have reported to us, we did see a $43 million increase in appropriations to our academic formula units, so those are our colleges and universities, Austin Peet, ETSU. And this accounts for about a 5.2% increase in funding from 14-15 to 15-16. If you were to add our non-formula units to that, so our colleges, of matter, agriculture centers, the total increase is $67.7 million, and that's about a 5.6% increase. So it was a really, it was a relatively healthy year for higher education in 15-16 for new operating dollars. As a comparison, in 14-15, we received 0.44% increase, and that was basically all health insurance. We did not receive any new operating dollars in 14-15. So looking at university revenue, this is kind of a different way of looking at the same things that we were talking about earlier. Here, you can see how the composition of the funding that the institutions here, universities, receive, and what proportion of that total revenue is attributable to each one of these categories. Tuition and fees, again, is starting to make, is continuing to make up a larger and larger proportion of our total revenue, while state appropriations are making up a smaller proportion. In 2008, '09 is when we, that's when we crossed over from 50% state appropriations at universities to 50% tuition and fees. And now, in our most recent year, in FY16, we're at 63% reliance on tuition and fee revenue. Now, if you were to apply the same distribution of revenues at universities that they received a decade ago, so if you were to look at the, apply the tuition and fee level of about, I think it's 49%, 48%, 49%, instead of the 63, what would that do to funding? And what that would do is actually move about $304 million from the tuition and fee revenue category back to state appropriations. You would also move an additional about $6 million out of the other category, and that includes sales and service, licensure fees, investment income, things like that. That would also move back to state appropriations for an increase in state appropriations of about $310 million, and that's just over the last decade. Community colleges tell a very similar story. In fiscal year '06, about 42.6% of revenue came from tuition and fees, this year 57.1 does. So again, we're seeing the movement away from state appropriations and towards tuition and fees for community college revenue. If you were to do the same exercise with our community colleges that I just described for our universities, you would move about $77 million from tuition and fees to state appropriations and other sources. And if you were to add those two together, so the 310 and the 77, that makes up about 14.5% of the total revenue for those units. So about 15% has moved in the last decade from state appropriations to tuition and fee, and tuition and fee reliance. Now, the total ENG revenue across all of our formula units, our non-formula units, so if you looked at all of higher ed, this revenue reached $3.27 billion in 15-16. We just crossed $3 billion in 13-14, so we've increased almost 10% in only two years. We crossed $2 billion only a decade ago, so we're $1.3 billion above that in only 10 years. So, I mean, the main takeaway is that the enterprise is growing and is doing so pretty quickly. And a lot of this has to do with enrollment growth. Now, looking at expenditures, while the last couple of slides have shown some differences in the makeup of the categories attributable to revenue, expenditures, not very different. We do still see over the last decade, as well as the last 20 and 30 years, that the majority of expenditures at our campuses are attributable to the academic core, the teaching function, so instruction, research, public service, academic support, those bottom four bars that you can see there. We're still around 60% of all expenditures are being directed towards these teaching functions. Where we are seeing some changes is in the composition of those, that other bar, which has a lot of different categories in it, so maintenance and operations, scholarships, fellowships, things like that, that top blue bar. And what we're finding is that the scholarship and fellowship is growing. So campuses are investing a lot more money into scholarships, fellowships. In fact, in FY16, about $163 million was invested in scholarships at our universities, and that's higher than the amount that was invested in research. So similar story at community colleges. Again, overall, you'll notice there's no red bar. Community colleges are not in the business of doing research, so they're not expending funding on it. But if you were to add the academic support, public service, and instruction bars together, again, we're over 60%, or right at 60% for instruction. And again, the changes in those blue bars at the top, they're investing more in scholarship and fellowship, and they're also investing some in maintenance and operation. We're seeing those numbers go up at our community colleges. As those campuses get older, they were all pretty much built in the 50s and 60s, mostly the 60s, and so they're having to do a lot more maintenance and operation investment. If you were to look at the entire higher education enterprise, we expended about $2.2 billion on academic functions alone in 15-16, and that includes about $1.6 billion on instruction, so just on instruction costs. Any questions on either revenue or expenditures before we move on to talk about tuition and fees? Yes, sir, Mayor Warden.
Over discussion. Could be in the abstract unless we ask and ask back to both. Oh, it's all, if income is growing, ability, stagnant, with, do we stack? That's where, that's where the rubber meets the road. All of this is abstract if we don't answer the question whether this is impact on affordability or not.
That's a great point, Mayor Warden, and this actually came up quite a bit during these higher-ed finance roundtables, these broad conversations we had last week that we'll talk to you about in more detail tomorrow, because a lot of these, you're right, in the abstract, don't tell you much until you start looking at, and even the median income of a state obscures variation in those income bands across that distribution. And so that, digging into that level would reveal a lot more. Like most states, Tennessee's median income the last few years has been very stagnant. Probably during the earlier part of that period, there was some growth up until 2008, of course, when things kind of flatlined. You know, the story here is nuanced too, because at that time, that's when lottery scholarship and TSAA were really getting significant increases, so a lot of the tuition increase effects, financial aid really obscured and insulated families from those, at least at the macro level. But you have since seen erosion in affordability now that incomes have stagnated, financial aid's not growing as fast as it has in the past. And so, one of the charts Crystal had, that green tuition bar is now back moving up pretty rapidly, there will be a reckoning for that for the state. And part of what, you know, Drive to 55 envisions, you know, these ambitious goals, but the financing challenge has not been addressed yet, and that's portending bad news if we don't get our arms around that pretty rapidly. So the point she raised is an important one that we'll have to dig into more.
What struck me with Crystal's numbers, I've not heard that, that $310 million figure before, and if you, if you think of that $310 million and then translate that per student, that's about a $3,000 per student figure that's added to their tuition. So basically, $3,000 has moved from the state to the tuition of the students over the last, I guess it was over the last, over the last decade, in inflation-adjusted dollars.
I appreciate the fact you have to look at these kind of numbers in context of other things, and I'm curious, and I'm probably asking a question above our pay grade here, but I'll ask these guys. I look at education as a process, K through 16, or Randy Boyd, K through J, and I'm curious whether the state's total investment in the process itself, rolling K through 12 into those numbers, would look similar or would paint a very different story? Because it's the total investment that we make as a state in our education and our students, et cetera, that's, you know, of critical importance. And, you know, we look at it in pieces and parts, but if you roll that together into a seamless investment, where do you think that would, do you have a sense of what that would be?
Well, it depends in part on what components you put in that. If you put economic community development in that, you know, as K through job, you know, basically all the way to employment, then there's a lot of money being spent in that area, you know, significantly.
As a percent of our total revenue of the state collections, do you have a sense of whether that investment is larger, smaller, or the same?
For instance, economic community development, as I said, that's gotten bigger over the years, you know, over recent years and all, so, you know, there's substantial investment the state's making.
And pre-K through 12 would have gone up snickily as well.
That would have too.
On note on that, I do know, and I don't know if this chart, this may be in your presentation, there's a chart we used to have, looking 40 years over time, at the composition of how the state spends its money, and on a percentage basis, the percentage going to both K-12 and higher ed has come down over time, primarily because of the emergence of healthcare and corrections and those things. So, I mean, obviously, real and nominal dollars have gone up, but as a percentage of what we spend, it has drifted down over time.
But theoretically, if there were savings to be found in other aspects that aren't on these charts, there's an opportunity to investment. In other words, if we got more efficient in K through 12 by some mechanism, presumably, there could be more investment in some other aspects because we look at it in pieces and parts, right? Okay, thank you.
I actually don't have that chart in the presentation, but we can get that for you, Mr. Wilson, or anyone else who, I believe that's from the CHEF survey, I mean, CHEF Does It, which is an aspect, the State Higher Education Finance Report that comes out of SHIO. I do know in the most recent releasing of that, Tennessee looked okay. I think 14% of our overall budget was attributable to higher ed, and I think that put us near the national average, I want to say, but, what'd you say?
98%.
Thank you. 98% of the U.S. average, so, but as Dr. Deaton said, he is correct.
I think near was closer.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we don't, we don't, we like to go with exact numbers in finance, so, thank you, David. So, Dr. Deaton's correct, though, it is trending downward over the last several decades. Now, so lastly, looking at tuition and fees, and again, this is also in your notebook, it's Table 5, and this is just looking at what our 15-16 fees look like compared to 10 years ago and then as well as last year. This table keeps getting longer and longer. I have a feeling I'm going to have to put it on two slides as we go forward because of a lot of tuition differentiation that is happening at our campuses, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But, so we do have some, you'll notice we have three entrances there for UT Knoxville, two for ETSU, and basically, what's going on here is we're differentiating fees and we're phasing those differentiated fees in at several of our campuses. As far as increases go over the last year, all of our UT institutions had a mandatory fee increase, or I'm sorry, a maintenance fee increase of 3%. When they started the 15 and 4 process back in the fall of 2012, you notice the first class that went under the 15 and 4, which is the fall of 2013 class, where they're charging you for 15 credit hours. The back end of that agreement was that they would try and limit any sort of tuition increases to 3% or below, and they've been able to do that so far. What's happening at ETSU, the freshman and sophomore class are paying increased fees for debt service and student activity associated with the DB Culp renovation, and those students, I believe, were involved in a process on voting on that, and so they're phasing those fee increases, but you're seeing a differentiated fee increase there between your juniors, seniors, grad students, and your freshmen and sophomores. Compared to the 13-14 to 14-15 increase, the 15-16 increases are pretty low. I mean, we had an average increase of about 6.7% for universities last year, and that was because we did not, we had a flat budget, there was no new funding in 14-15, and so institutions had to reach outside of the recommended range that THEC provided because we did not receive the operating dollars we requested. 15-16, we did, and so we were able to stay in our range for mandatory fees. Looking at, any questions on this before I move on? Okay. Looking at 16-17, just as a reminder, associated with that $40.9 million increase in operating funds, we are recommending a 0% to 3% increase in maintenance fees only. Mandatory fees are still something that the board is deciding for institutions, or along with institutions, that THEC doesn't make a recommendation on. Those discussions are going to begin here in earnest in the next couple of months, especially once we see the governor's budget and any sort of legislative action. Any questions? So, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
A couple of comments on that, and again, this we recommend for consent tomorrow as well, to pass on to Commissioner of Finance Administration. I mean, there's a lot of stories to tell from this stat, of course, and one of the things it suggests to us is that the importance of the alignment of state funding, tuition and fee recommendations, and financial aid, and that's part of the solution, I think, Mayor Warden, to the affordability issue you raised, is even when we talk about tuition increases, that there is a concomitant increase in financial aid as well, and not just simply trying to shift the burden around to different types of students. One of the questions, I'm fond of asking my students when they see similar data, do we then reflect upon higher ed finance as being very broken because of this? Is it not functioning, or is it very healthy in spite of this data? Because a lot of the trends Crystal presented, if you look over those 20, 30 years, enrollments have have increased dramatically, university graduation rates have gone up from the high 40s to the high 50s over that time. And so there's a robustness to the data, even though I think we would all hope and pray we could shift that pendulum back and have more state investments. So, again, the context here is key, as Drive to 55 takes hold, we have to get much more intentional, I think, as a commission in the state about aligning those finance tools to get to where the state needs us to be. So, anyway, that's, for what that's worth, Mr. Chairman, thanks. Questions?
As a housekeeping matter, you know, that discussion, although we're not voting today, is a critical discussion, and I would suggest that in the future, I'll.
To the podium, Emily House, who works on the research area here at THEC, will give several reports, kind of cobbled together, and I'm probably stealing some up for thunder here, as I tend to do, but some of these were leftovers from the November meeting that time, it was a casualty of time. And some of these are going a little bit more in depth about some of the data we see across enrollments and graduates and transfer activity, et cetera. So with that, Emily, let me turn the podium.
That was not too much thunder. So, Mr. Chair, Dr. Deaton, members of the commission, I will present very briefly on three of the statutory reports that the research team produces each year. The articulation and transfer report is leftover from the November meeting. Then I'll speak briefly about profiles and trends, and the supply and demand of educated, the supply of labor and the workforce demand for that labor, which are two reports that were made available mid-January, a couple weeks ago. And then I will speak briefly about some quick updates to Tennessee Promise, so we don't have a spoiler, we don't have a whole lot of new information about Promises, the semester is just beginning, the spring 2016 semester, but there is a little bit of an update to give there. As always, these reports are available on the THEC website. And I was joking earlier, I watched the recording of the November commission meeting, and I thanked a number of people for their help with the Promise information, the Promise data. I sounded like I was, I was accepting an Oscar, so I don't mean to sound that way again, but I do want to acknowledge Alex, Matt, Taylor, and Brian from the research team, if y'all can wave very quickly, for their work on these reports and for all of their effort each day. So hopefully that was not too effusive or Oscar-esque. So I will speak briefly about the articulation and transfer report first. Really, the thesis of this report is that students in Tennessee are mobile. Many students do not complete a degree from the institution at which they start their schooling. So about 45% of graduates in the 13, 14 academic year, most of these graduates are spring 2014 graduates, close to 50% of them, about 45% of them, transfer at least once before graduating. And approximately 30%, that's the bulleted, bullet at the bottom, attended a community college in Tennessee. So a lot of these students, as I said, aren't necessarily finishing where they start, which should inform and does inform our conversation about the transfer pathways and about the alignment between two-year and four-year institutions, as well as public and private Majority of transfer happens within the state, between public and private two-year and four-year institutions. That's the blue portion of the pie chart here. Again, that does include private institutions as well. If you look at the light green portion of the pie chart, the 19.2%, I think that is particularly interesting, because that is Tennesseans who attended an institution out of state coming back. So this is for the 13, 14 academic year, again, that almost 80% of the transfer activity is happening within Tennessee, or it's Tennesseans coming home. So again, that has implications for conversations about the workforce, about transfer behavior, how to support these students, encourage transfer when appropriate, things like that. Transfer is multidirectional, though the bulk of it is vertical, either upward or downward in a vertical sense. If you look at the top left, the transfer from community college to a public university, that reflects almost half of the transfer behavior in Tennessee. This will be very interesting to see the effects of Promise on this behavior. So when I or one of my colleagues presents on this report, two, one year from now, two years from now, five years from now, it'll be interesting to see how that proportion of transfer changes in light of Promise, and in light of all the other initiatives implicit in the Drive to 55. There is a little bit of swirl happening, and by swirl, I mean horizontal transfer, students who are going from one university to another, or one community college to another, which is an interesting phenomenon in and of itself. There could be geographic reasons for this, there could be programmatic reasons for this. I decided I wanted to change my major from X to Y, so I'm going to go to another university. So that's something to think about as well, though when we talk about transfer, it's primarily vertical, and when we, and when we typically consider it. To be more clear about this slide, this should say out-of-state transfers into Tennessee. So where are these transfer students coming? I did mention that most people are transferring within the system, but you can see that there is a regional effect in the southeast. So students who are coming into Tennessee as transfer students are primarily from the southeast. What is interesting about this as well is that students from California, Texas, and Florida, who transfer into Tennessee, over half of them are returning Tennesseans. So those who may have had the idea that they wanted to go far away for college, may have realized that that didn't work so well for them, or didn't really want to live in either of those states, for any, any of those states for any reason, and they came back. So it's just an interesting pattern for those three states. So moving forward, as I mentioned, the transfer pathways, we will have a lot more information as time goes on. We have a good bit of information now, but we'll have even more as time goes on, to look at the impact of transfer pathways on time to degree, whether students are, whether this is impacting the choice of major for students, and how that transfer behavior is happening. Students who enroll in a pathway program at a community college, how many of them do transfer, as that is really the objective of a transfer pathway, is to have that option if you so choose. As well as Promise, we've had many conversations already about what will happen to students following the two years or the five semesters as Promise students at a community college or at a TCAT. How can universities encourage them to transfer as appropriate? And in a few years, we'll know. Right now, we don't know, but in a few years, we'll have a much better sense of who's transferring, where are they going? Are they remaining in-state? Are they transferring to private institutions, public institutions, out-of-state, et cetera? We'll know a lot more about that, as well as who the character, what the characteristics are, who transfers versus who does not. So are there any questions about the transfer report, the articulation transfer report, or comments about transfer?
This is a surprise.
I'm sorry?
Is it a surprise?
It's not a surprise in that the trend has been consistent in Tennessee over the past few years. So in that respect, it's not necessarily surprising, seeing how the behavior has been. I think what will, could be surprising a couple years from now, is how this may change in light of Promise in particular. Did you want to, Tristan?
Yeah, a quick question. So the, and I don't remember, is the, is the sort of this, this chart of people moving around, is that very much in keeping with, yeah, that one? Have those proportions changed very much over the last few years, or is it much the same?
I don't believe they have. I'm going to look, Alex is shaking his head. No, they, they have remained consistent over time.
The, the thing that I'm, I must admit, I'm really curious to look at is how, there's actually a, a report that just came out from CCRC, which you probably have seen, but others may find really interesting. So Community College Research Center, Davis Jenkins, they're just, just published a paper just, I guess it was earlier this week, maybe even, which actually showed statewide, across the nation, what transfer rates look like and what happens to those students. What was pretty interesting was that actually Tennessee was actually in, in the top 10 of across the nation for students who actually, the proportions of community college students who actually eventually transfer to four-year schools, and also in the top 10 for what happens to those students, for the, the graduation rates of those students when they actually transfer to four-year schools. What was curious was that we weren't as strong in the proportion of those students who actually had completed their associate's degree by the time they moved. So, now, this, this data was actually from 2007, so it's the 2007 cohort, and of course, much has happened since then. This is before the creation of the transfer pathways, before the Complete College Tennessee Act, all kinds of things that we've done to, 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 we, we hope actually make things substantially better for those students. So what, what I'm very curious about is, A, and we're, we're actually going to try to reproduce Davis's numbers, but, but looking at a later cohort to see, can we actually see improvements in those? But, but it's at least worth knowing that as you see this, this diagram, and you see that there's already a pretty strong movement from community college to universities, what, what I hope you would be thinking is, well, well, what happens when they go there? And actually, what happens is that they, they go there, and the vast majority of those students do very well when they get there. So actually, we have a really strong track record of those community college students moving into the four-year sector and going on and getting credentials. That, as I say, is those, that 2007 numbers. The hope is that creation of the Tennessee transfer pathways and all of the articulation work that we've been doing should actually be, be able to improve those numbers. Reverse transfer should certainly improve those numbers. What I'm curious about over time is to see, when students move from community college to university, so is that before or after they complete what? Is that before or after they complete all of their gen ed? Is it before or after they complete their whole degree? And do we see a slight change in that behavior? I think that'd be interesting to look at over time.
Really, I know we had a discussion from some universities about a strategy of seeking out-of-state students, and I didn't see it here, but do you have the numbers on whether the net transfers into state and out-of-state, how those bore out? Do we have that? For some, some ETSU, UT, and others were looking at sort of a strategy.
We do have those numbers, I think to some extent, they're included in this report, but I don't have them in front of me, and we can absolutely.
So did we have a net influx of students transferring in, or?
From a transfer perspective, I'm not sure, but I will figure that out for you.
Okay.
I will, I will answer that question for you.
That's a good question. I, I would, just guessing, I bet we do, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, yeah.
Well, I know some people were looking at it as a strategy in terms of dealing with finance.
Exactly, yeah. And if I could, sure.
Right.
Very much.
So that I would have been able to say.
Yeah.
Secretary Hargit, I, I did know that, I just don't know in terms of the.
I knew you wanted to say it, that's why.
That's right, that's right, I appreciate that. But in terms of the transfer behavior, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. I reflect back on Meth's question a little bit, and perhaps I shouldn't be surprised at this, because we've been doing this report for a long time, but I'm, I'm always struck by how much settling there is of a student's initial college choice. You think, well, they think about this a lot, they decide on a school, they go there, and they stick it out. A lot of them don't, you know, they, for whatever reason, they don't. And so there's, there's that type of shifting going on across two-year and four-year, which speaks to the importance of tracking these students across campuses, so we can report back on transfer success rates, graduation rates, et cetera. But I'm always struck by how much settling there is in college choice after that freshman semester. So perhaps I shouldn't be, but I am. Emily, are these students surveyed in any way for like their, their reason of their transfer?
Not by THEC, they are not.
Okay, but by institution?
By institution, I am unfamiliar. So not, not that I've ever seen.
Yeah, there, there is some work that, at least most of our colleges have some kind of exit survey that, to understand why it is that students are leaving. But it's often difficult work, because people, people move, and then, and you don't know they've moved until they've moved. They don't always tell you they're moving, so, yeah. Sometimes they don't want to tell you the reason why they moved.
Sure. I mean, it would be absolutely, it would be very useful information to have, it's just not something THEC is in the business of collecting. Okay. All right. So the Profiles and Trends Report is a report that we produce annually that reflects what's going on in Tennessee versus what is going on nationally and in the southern region. We typically consider the SREB, the, the region of comparison, when we're talking about what's going on in the south. What's new this year is that in the spirit of a lot of the work NTEM's has done, a lot of this information is available on the web in a format that's different than in the past. So the report itself is available, but each figure and the data that populate the figure are available online, which is great. It's all in the aggregate, there is nothing sensitive, there is nothing identifiable. So anybody who wants to download this information in an Excel file and manipulate it to see different cross tabs or different types of combinations of information is able to do that. And in the interest of time, I won't do much of a demo of that, but that is available for anybody who wants the behind-the-scenes data for this data, for these figures. So this first figure, which is figure 1.1 in the report, reflects the relationship between personal income and educational attainment. And each of the 50 states is in each of these four quadrants, and you can see that Tennessee is in the lower-left quadrant, reflecting a low-income, low-education attainment state. This reflects the personal per capita income, as well as the proportion of adults with a degree. So in our conversations about creating a skilled workforce, creating opportunities for industry to come into the state, and what type of workforce are these folks looking for if they decide to, to place themselves in Tennessee, the conversation really does need to go to attainment, as well as the personal benefits and the economic returns to educational attainment. So many of the states in the top-right quadrant are northeastern states, states of New England, that are typically touted as those with high education, high-income populations. So, nothing shocking here, nothing new here, and this has remained relatively consistent over time, but this is just where we are right now in terms of income per capita, as well as attainment. Yes, sir?
This particular graphic does not reflect that, but there's a, a great deal of work around that, yeah. Speaking to high school graduation rate, which is something we don't always talk about very much in here, relative to the SREB region, as well as the nation as a whole, Tennessee is above average in terms of, or above, sorry, above the proportion of graduates. So that's something that we should be very excited about and very proud of. The national numbers were not yet available for 2013, 14, which is why there is no blue bar to the right, but for the graduating class of 2014, 87.2% of high school, that was our high school graduation rate. I can't speak to the cohort, I can't speak to whether it was a ninth-grade cohort moving through, but we can speak in more detail about that, looking at the report, if anyone is curious. So this should be a, a point of pride for sure, for the state of Tennessee, that so many of our students are completing high school. However, the college-going rate, the statewide college-going rate is only about 57%. So of those who graduate from high school, only about 57%, I'm sorry, yeah, 57% of those seniors graduate, go to, graduate and enroll in higher education immediately following So statewide, the college-going rate is 57%, but if you break that down by race, you can see that there continue to be racial disparities in those taking advantage of it, opportunities in higher education. What I would like to point out here is the Hispanic grouping, which is in the middle. And there was quite the bump between 2013 and 2014. And what's interesting in that regard is that it's very county-driven. Now, the number of Hispanic students in many counties is low, so a change from two students to four students will reflect in a large percentage growth. But if you look at some of the counties in middle Tennessee, that's really not the reason for the growth. So a few of the counties, Davidson, Rutherford, and a few others, reflect a much more substantial growth in the number of students who are, who identify as Hispanic or Latino enrolling in higher education, which is wonderful.
Emily, could you go back a slide, please? Do you have that slide by counties?
I don't believe we have this figure prepared by counties, but we can.
You could email it, I'd like to see.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I know on our campuses, we're seeing fewer and fewer students who identify with, by just one race.
That's right.
And we're seeing more multiracial. So I don't know what that means for all this, but.
So moving forward, we hope that that will be reflected in the data, and that the, the end of, the number of students who identify as multiracial will allow us to make more statements about that group. Typically, and for, for better, for worse, often for worse, the group that selects multi, identifies as multiracial gets lumped into the other category, and to the extent that many students begin to identify that way, or more students are identifying that way, we need to be more intentional about how we treat that group, for sure. So, so to my point about the Hispanic college-going rate increasing, that's great news, but relative to that of white students or Asian students, you can see that the rate is still very low, which reflects the racial disparity in college-going throughout the state, which is not unique to Tennessee, unfortunately. That's an issue nationwide. Similarly, thinking about students who are low-income, low-income in this case is defined as students who are free meal eligible in high school. Tennessee is about on par with SREB states, but a little bit below the national rate of enrollment. So those students who are low-income students, about 33% of them enrolled in higher education in fall 2013. So we. 2013. So we talk a lot about affordability. We talk a lot about tuition as well as grant aid, and this is something to be aware of as we continue to have those conversations, that of this population of students, only about a third of them enrolled in higher education just a couple of years ago. Looking at the six-year post-secondary graduation rate, so we spoke just a second ago about high school grad rates. This is the college graduation rate. Before I say anything about these numbers, I'd like to point out that in 2005, the methodology changed. That's why you see that sort of change between '03, '04 and '05. So, to Dr. Dunleavy's point about the previous slide, my note for this slide is, it'll be interesting to see what happens in light of the shifting as well as the new enrollees as a result of PROMIS, to say nothing of the adults re-engaging in higher education through Reconnect and any other initiatives. So it'll be interesting to see if and how these rates change as the composition of students at four-year institutions and two-year institutions continues to evolve. Yes, Dr. Dunleavy?
Yeah, it's, it's one of the things that I think, at least I found really surprising, that it, that it really is an effect, that the, the graduation rate for community colleges, if you only look for those students to graduate in a community college, then it's artificially deflated by the fact that there are just an enormous number of students who just never complete their degree in community college and go on to the university before they complete it. So what actually is a pretty interesting number is to look at the graduation rates for those students just graduating from anywhere.
And, and so that, that is reflected in the change in method.
Exactly.
So that's what we do now, whereas that's not what was done previously.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not credited to the blue, the blue line.
Right, that's right.
If that makes any sense.
That's right.
So, yeah.
And again, to just break this down by subgroup, again, there is a lot of disparity between, along the lines of sex, along the lines of ethnicity, as well as along the lines of income. And many of these are in the direction that would not be surprising to, to many folks. In both the two-year and four-year institutions, females graduate at higher rates than males. Students who are non-white graduate at rates that are lower than their white peers. And students who are low-income, as defined by receiving, being eligible for a Pell Grant, graduate at rates that are lower than their middle and high-income peers. So none of this is, again, unique to Tennessee. None of this is surprising, but it really does reflect that there's a lot of work to be done to improve the outcomes of particular groups of students.
So does this mean if the guys don't catch up, the women are going to take over the world?
Possibly.
Are you serious?
Possibly and probably.
Think of the change in this in the last 25 years.
It's just will take over.
So the key takeaway from this is while we do have some points of pride related to high school graduation rate and enrollment and completion rates of some populations of students, some, some sub-populations of students, there really is a lot more work to do when we think about what is happening in Tennessee, and then when we take it a step further and compare what's going on in Tennessee to what's going on in the southeast as well as nationally. And as we've said a number of times now, how will things change in light of the suite of programs related to the Drive to 55 remains to be seen, but it will be very interesting to see how one year, five year, and 10 years from now, these figures look. Any questions about that before we move on quickly? The Academic Supply and Occupational Demand Report is still a pretty new report. This is only the third time we've produced it, I believe, and the trends are relatively similar. So if you are a consistent reader of this report, this will not be anything dramatically different from years past. And this also relates to THEC's master plan work, the work that David and Alex did a great deal of related to Tennessee's master planning process, and how, THEC's master planning process, and how degrees were projected and how the needs were met, or were anticipated to be met with regard to the Drive to 55. So the number of degrees awarded over the next decade will increase. This is at all degree levels, from certificate all the way through bachelor's degrees, thinking only about the undergraduate levels of degrees. This reflects natural growth and additional, more intentional growth as a result of Drive to 55 initiatives. Relatedly, there's a high demand for skilled labor in a number of fields. There is not as much demand in a number of other fields for particular occupations. So we'll talk about that very briefly. And that many institutions offer programs to meet these needs. So this, that's sort of the, the arc of this, this report, that more degrees are going to be awarded, there's high demand for particular degrees and folks who are trained in particular areas, and that that can happen at many institutions across the state. Per the master plan, there will be great growth in bachelor's degrees and certificates at public and for-profit institutions, more so than associate's degrees, more so than at private institutions, though there will be growth in all of those degree areas in all of those sectors. The projections for growth in the master plan don't necessarily account for a shock to higher education, if there are any economists in the room, a shock such as Tennessee PROMIS, such as Reconnect, a programmatic change that can really influence the influx of folks enrolling, as well as folks graduating. So these projections don't necessarily reflect that in ways that they could, but that's just going to be an added bump moving forward, hopefully. As in years past, this is very similar. There are very, very high needs in manufacturing, construction, transportation, banking, and education positions. These jobs are in very high demand. The salaries for these positions are greater than the median per capita income, which is about, a little more than that now, about $25,000. The median household income is, in Tennessee, is $45,000. The median per capita income is closer to $25,000 per the Department of Labor, who provides us with these data points. So, for those five occupations that I just mentioned, you can see what the deficit in Tennessee is, has been for the past year. So for example, in manufacturing, there are about 2,600 jobs that don't have people to fill them. The average salary for someone working in a, I say manufacturing very generally, the, the average salary for someone working in manufacturing is about $33,000. If you look at transportation, construction, there are job deficits in, in excess of 1,000 jobs. So there are 1,500 people who could be employed in construction, for example, who just need the training to be able to fill those jobs. So lots of positions, big salaries, relatively speaking. And again, this is not much different from what I've said in years past. Programs that can help Tennesseans to be trained to meet these needs are available across the state. It's not really unique, programs are not unique to one type of institution or one degree level. And I think this is the same conversation last year, as last year about construction. There are plenty of institutions that award various levels of awards in various specialties related to construction across the state. And the caveat that I would be irresponsible to not mention is that there's not a one-to-one relationship between what you major in or what degree you get and what you end up doing as a career, or what occupation you, you take a job in. So it's not necessarily an easy one-to-one kind of conversation, kind of relationship. And this report does not fully demonstrate the role of the for-profit institutions in Tennessee. So again, nothing too new, nothing too crazy, but still very important information. Yes, Chairman Copeland?
Does your data, do you have a slide that would show the, the demand for those jobs across the state, where they may be stronger in any particular grant, grant division or...
We do not have the data cut that way, but that is a conversation that I can have with our colleagues at the Department of Labor who may have it cut that way.
Your workforce.
Or by LWIA. Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that, that the folks at the Department of Labor have it cut that way. We just didn't receive it that way. Okay. That was very quick. Are there any questions about this? And again, all of this is available on the web, so. Oh, and there are many additional resources to discuss this and to address this. The THEC LEAP report, which Kurt is going to talk about momentarily, Randy's, Commissioner Boyd's research team over at ECD has produced a lot of reports, as well as the Edge Trends TN website that we've demoed in here a number of times, that look at, that is broken down by LWIA on that website, where job opportunities align with higher ed offerings. And I leave this in here really only for effect. The same blank slide that said apprenticeships? Question mark was in my presentation from last year, really to, to make the point that we still don't have a firm grasp on how to really utilize apprenticeships, how to count them towards the Drive to 55, how to discuss certifications that are industry certifications as opposed to certificates from a post-secondary institution. So that was really more for effect. And then just very briefly, and then I will turn it over to Kurt. The only quick update I have related to PROMIS is that we will know shortly about who retain, who persisted from fall 2015 into spring 2016. The semester just started, so we do not yet have the census date. I'm not sure when the 14th day is.
Yeah, we actually ended up putting it back by two days.
Because of the snow. So, so shortly, I will be bothering Tristan and his colleagues for whatever data they have available. So we will know shortly who came back for their second semester. We do know that approximately 80% of Tennessee PROMIS students, so that number of about 16,000 students who enrolled, about 80% of them completed their community service by the, the deadline. So if we were to use that as a proxy for planning to enroll in the second semester, about 80% of PROMIS students are persisting from semester one to semester two, which is an exceptionally high, which is a very positive, positive thing. And when we talk about the lottery scholarship, we also taught, we often talk about students who lose the scholarship but stay in school. And it will be curious to see who's staying in school, even though they may not have done their community service such, and thereby lost their scholarship. So who's sticking around, who may have transferred right away. So there are many, many questions that we can, need to look into once we have this information, when we have this data. And the next steps related to PROMIS more generally are just a plethora of research questions. Who chose to partake in PROMIS and then transferred, or just went somewhere else in the first place? Where do students kind of fall off the pipeline, which I've always referred to as the waterfall? Students who could have attended a four-year institution, and I say could have, kind of in air quotes, from an undermatched perspective, students who could have enrolled in a four-year and chose to then take advantage of PROMIS and enroll in a two-year? How does this vary by region or high school? And our colleagues, the Department of Ed, are working on a high school-level analysis of, of Tennessee PROMIS take-up and enrollment, which will be very interesting. As well as the packaging of financial aid, we are only now starting to look much more concretely at students who receive Pell Grants and/or lottery scholarships and/or TSAA and/or PROMIS, and sort of what that package looks like, and where those students enrolled, and what their financial status is. So there will always be more to come in light of PROMIS. In this particular moment, this was just a very quick update. So if there are any questions about that or anything else, I know that was a lot of information about reports. All right.
Caffeine helps a lot.
Thank you very much. Did you say caffeine helps a lot, as I said?
Yeah, Emily owned stock at Starbucks, I think, basically. You know, one of the things about, as a segue, and thank Emily for that report, as we segue to Kurt, one of the things that she ended with is an area that we're watching pretty closely in the financial packaging. We've tried to get our arms around how student loans have changed fall semester of 2015 compared to prior years. The early data from the federal government, and again, this is early, but it does appear that the loan volume, total aggregate and on a person basis, has begun to drift down, which I guess was to be expected to some degree. So we're anxious to watch how that moves over time and to see to what extent really we did have students not have the need to borrow as much, and how pervasive borrowing was. So that's another thing we're watching very closely. Okay, Kurt Johnston with the LEAP report. This really is a good segue because in many ways, to address the supply-demand problems, we see the LEAP legislation from two years ago really is one of the first statewide efforts to address this and the alignment gaps between higher ed and, and the workforce. And Kurt directs that for us, and he'll present the LEAP report. Kurt?
Thank you, Dr. Deaton. I want to make sure. So last year, I came to you, 11 days on the job. So now I'm 11, one year and 11 days, and I'm excited to be here. Today, in front of you, you should have a LEAP report. This is what was just recently produced. I want to start out by thanking the THEC team that helped put this together, particularly the creative eye of Kate Derrick for making this a really stellar document. As we move forward, what I want to do is just walk you through some of the highlights from the report, answer any questions you may have as we move along. Please feel free to interrupt me. The report here is actually, reflects the total breakdown of what's actually happened over the past year. The reason we've created this, we're actually statutorily obligated to report on both completions as well as job placements for all of the students that are participating in our programs across the state. There are 12 of them, and they're reflected here on pages 11 and 12 of your reports. The first pages are introductions to what's actually happened, what led into what's created the legislation for the report and such. Moving through, beginning of last year, when I spoke to you, we had 44 counties that were involved in our report. At the end of this past year, that number has increased to 51. By the end of our first year, we've touched the lives of about 15,584 students through the LEAP program. We're very excited about that. And actually, that report reflects really what's happened in the past fall semester alone. The completions and job placement figures are numbers that we will have down the road, but because we've only had one semester's worth of, of curriculum, we don't have those numbers to reflect yet. I can tell you, though, that was at the time of publication. I can tell you, though, in the last week, we've had 29 veterans that have completed from our program up in Clarksville, three of which should be placed, knock on wood, at Aki Bono by the end of the week. So that's great that we have some numbers that I can share with you right now. All the numbers, I assume, all the counties that are colored in blue are those that have actually joined in on the, on the LEAP program throughout the past year. Of that total number of the 15,000, 1,591 of those students are high school students. Those are students that range the whole gambit from freshman to senior year. Those students are engaged in classes that are supported by LEAP with either faculty members that are using curriculum that has been purchased with LEAP funds, equipment itself, and renovations to lab space. Some of those students are enrolled in dual enrollment classes, the vast majority are. Some of the younger students are enrolled in classes that will lead to dual enrollment, all of which are pointing towards classes that are going to fill, excuse me, complete certificates in advanced manufacturing and mechatronics, as well as some IT courses as well. Yes?
Go back a slide again.
I can.
Sorry, I'm a little slow today. What, what is inhibiting the white counties from being involved in LEAP?
We had 27 applicants for the LEAP program when we first initiated the RFP back in 2014. A lot of those white counties are those that were not selected from the grant selection process. That's, that's the most simple answer. Most of them all want to be engaged in this program in some capacity.
Any kind of local match required?
Yes, there was a local match required of 10% of the total grant.
And is that match from the county, the city, the school system? Who's the match from?
The match really can come from a lot of areas. It was intended to be, actually be served with internships and apprenticeships as far as giving wages to students that are engaged in the program. We've seen some of that, but because of the timeline of, of starting really full academic work in the fall, we're going to see a lot more of that in the spring and the summer as we move into the full year. Any others? Great. Okay. So let's jump back to this. So we talked about the dual enrollment students that are in the high school level. 630 students are full-time or part-time students that are enrolled in community college or TCATs. These students are typically, actually, almost 100% of them are in classes that would not have existed without LEAP programs. So these are students that are all on their way to earn certificates in fields of advanced manufacturing and IT. And we'd like to note that the IT field will actually begin in full, in earnest in the spring. There were some prerequisites that were required for new programs down at Columbia State, and we will see some more mobile application development students in this coming spring. The final bucket is a rather large number, 3,363, and that really encompasses all the students that were engaged in some form of LEAP activity that was not necessarily related directly to the classroom, academic clubs that were created. We had some job fairs and workforce development opportunities where volunteers were coming into the classroom to walk students through a day in the life and what it looked like in IT and advanced manufacturing. And you'll notice, I'm going to be using those words a lot, and that's because, as Emily pointed out, manufacturing is our number-one shortfall right now in Tennessee. And that's what these programs have really aimed to target. I would like to point out, though, that a lot of these students are really amping up, ramping up, excuse me, into a more comprehensive interaction with employers in the coming year. We've actually identified some of those employers as being really stellar partners in the report. One of those is SL America. SL was not originally a part of the program that was connected to Roan State. They were in the area, but Roan State was going to develop an advanced workforce center there in Clinton, Tennessee. SL, being right down the road, heard about this and wanted to get involved. SL has actually provided a brand-new injection molding equipment, as well as a faculty member to supplement the program. This is something that happened very quickly and really represents the flexibility of how we're, how the LEAP is acting in our communities. And I think it's a great example of how we can try to make this a best, best practice across the state. As we move into the rest of the report, you're going to see summaries on each and every individual program. Each page is going to start with a list of partners, as well as a summary of the actual intent of the grant, some background information, and a headcount table on, as far as giving you a snapshot of where we are in the funnel of building these pipelines in each of our communities. Now, one thing I'm, I'm very happy about that we were able to reflect in this report is actually some employer feedback. A lot of our private industry was very anxious to try to... A lot of our private industry was very anxious to try to express how happy they are with this pro, with this program. You'll notice that, especially, I'll read the one on the right from Molly, which is up in Moorestown. "We, along with the rest of the industries in town, have tried to identify opportunities where we can work with the education system to start to enlighten the students on what manufacturing is today. It's different than what it was 20 years ago. Manufacturing is now highly automated, highly skilled, and requires a different aptitude." I think kids will absolutely have a different idea of what manufacturing is from their participation in the program. That is a part of a larger notion that we're dealing with in Tennessee when it comes to stigma and educating students on what it takes to be successful as in, in the modern workforce. When we had our panel here before, we talked about stigma, uh, quite extensively, how that's a challenge for high school counselors, how that's a challenge for parents. Another one of the employers that we identified in the, in the report is actually Alcoa-Halmet, and they are running a internship program over the summer. Uh, that's probably, uh, one of the best examples I can think of of a way to engage the local community and students in this process. You have students that are going through, they're getting trained in real-world experience. Uh, you have, uh, managers that are learning how to engage with millennials for the first time. But you're also working with a community that's coming to a presentation at the end of the summer where students are able to show off what they've learned. Most important thing about that presentation is that it includes, uh, professionals from the area, educators, as well as parents who are walking through a manufacturing floor in August. It's air-conditioned. It's not that loud. It's safe. These are things that are going to have an impact in the way stu, uh, students and parents are viewing manufacturing across the state. I was also able to include some several student profiles throughout the report. I think it's important to understand what we're doing on the micro level as well as the macro. Uh, here we have Paige, who's a freshman at, I believe it's Marshall County High School. Paige's mother actually wrote me not too long ago, uh, as soon as she heard about the LEAP report, expressing how her daughter, for the first time, is actually excited about going to school. A lot of students that are engaged in our CTE programs are students that are not excelling for, in more traditional programs or not destined for a four-year institution. Now we have a professional pathway for Paige and a place where she can be, feel passionate and happy. And I think that that's a wonderful story that we're trying to share, and it's, it's one that reflects a lot of the students of that 1,591 across the state, and we're hoping to build on that momentum as we move forward into the fall. Uh, the final portion of the report offers some legislative recommendations. Uh, number one being sustainability of current projects. Uh, there's a lot of groundwork that's already been laid with the current projects that can be expanded into adjacent counties. Uh, we also have, uh, I think it's important to note that the project directors themselves are filling a rather unique role in their communities. Uh, there may be some professionals that are working on workforce development through ECD or WIOA. There may be some educators that are trying to outreach in the community, but those, there's never been somebody that's sitting right in the middle between those two. These project directors are invaluable to that process, and it's something that sustainability will allow, will enable for moving forward. Now, I do want to make it clear, each one of our projects does have a sustainability plan that was built into how they, uh, created their projects to begin with. However, some of those sustainability plans do not incorporate funding for continued salary for project directors. Yes, sir?
No, so the amounts that are listed on the pages before are actually for the total
term of the grant, which is two years. Uh, the official contract started in January 20th of last year. They will continue until January 22nd of next year. Uh, so that eight, that 735,000 will be spent over two-year time. The local match is not reflected in this annual report, no. Uh, the other piece of the legislative recommendations, expansion to unserved areas. I mentioned before, we had 27 applicants, 15 of which were not selected. We'd love to fill all those counties in with some blue by the end of the next, uh, with the next round of LEAP. I also wanted to add in the expand, examining opportunities for work-based learning. I've, I've spoke to that a little bit about Alcoa. You just cannot underst, you cannot overstate the value of those experiences for the students and how they're engaged in the process, as well as for the employers themselves, learning how to engage with students. For the coming year, we can expect to see some more completions from the TCAT graduates. Uh, some of our two-year degrees from the, uh, community college level may not be reflected in January of next year, but they will be by the end of May of next year. We will be tracking enrollment of high school students into post-secondary institutions. Where are they going as soon as they complete their, uh, put their dual enrollment credits? Uh, job placements for graduates, we'll, uh, we'll have a clear picture of that, as well as what, what happened with our students that are engaged in work-based learning. Were they brought on? Did they maintain? Uh, we'd also like to see some expansion of work-based learning into the summer, as we mentioned before, for the local match components. Uh, I would like to point out as well that two of our projects here, uh, both in Nashville and in Memphis, are working on developing a rather robust data tool that will become available in Nashville at the end of February and in Memphis towards the end of the summer. Uh, this tool will allow students to do career exploration, um, into fields such as advanced manufacturing and IT. Uh, it will link them to, uh, education opportunities in the area, and will also serve as a great, uh, resource and tool for finding internships and other jobs on, in the area. Um, we're very excited to see what that'll look like in the coming year. So are there any other questions?
Most of your, in the beginning of the report, you talk about the context. You, you list maybe 10 or 15, um, areas where there's really a need in the workforce.
Yes, sir.
Most of these programs to date that have been developed are manufacturing, mechatronics, and IT, which don't address a number of those. So, uh, what, that's the, I'm guessing that's the biggest need?
Yes, sir.
And then you're going to move to, uh, a number of these others? Is that the plan?
Strength of the program for LEAP is that it is responsive to the local needs. Uh, I think with what we've seen with the injection molding machine that happened in Red Roan State, I think that's a great example of how their employers are coming to the front, forefront. All of our projects were required to present a data-driven rationale for why they needed the, the funding in the first place. So that's why advanced manufacturing is at the top of the list, because it is at the top of almost everybody's list as far as skill gaps are concerned. Moving down the list in the coming year, if, if the Assembly should decide to fund another round of LEAP, uh, which we're hoping that they will, I can't speak to whether or not we will be specifically targeting, uh, other sectors outside of manufacturing, but it would make sense that those would be at a higher premium because we have targeted 12 communities with advanced manufacturing already. Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Let me just say, in conclusion to that report, this is one of those areas that you, you look upon and you think, this ought to be a permanent part of the state policy landscape because it's had such a good success so far. And I think this report at this time next year will show the student completions to be very robust. Um, so I hope it becomes a permanent part of what we do because it dovetails so nicely with the intelligence we know about supply-demand gaps, very intentional and aligned efforts to address those, just makes a lot of sense. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, with that, that concludes our agenda items, and I'll note it is 3:01, 3:02 by my satellite, so I think we're in good shape for time.
Perfect, perfect. Well, as everybody knows, we have our joint meeting with the State Board of Education at 3:30, so, uh, Ray can be back probably 3:15, 3:20. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, thank you. I could have your attention, please. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our joint meeting between the Tennessee Higher Education Commission and the State Board of Education. It's, it's my pleasure, my name is Evan Coe, and I chair the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and it's my pleasure to welcome my colleagues with the State Board of Education here. Obviously, there are lots of exciting things going on in, in education in Tennessee from, from K through 12, and obviously in higher education as well. Uh, the, the purpose of this meeting, for anybody who may be new, is to highlight the level of communication and cooperation that we have between our K through 12 system and our higher education system. It's critical, uh, and really important, and, uh, this, this is a wonderful opportunity for all of us and for the entire state, everyone watching, to, to see, uh, public policy at work in promoting education in this state. So thanks, everyone, for being here, and I'd like to recognize Chairman Phil and Ralston.
Thank you, thank you, Evan. Uh, we're certainly, uh, glad to be here. Uh, we've got lots of, uh, great things going on, got lots of opportunities also. So, uh, I think we've got some good reports on the, uh, agenda here today, so we'll look forward to those reports. We're glad to be here.
Thanks very much. All right, very first, uh, report we're going to hear is a sales update from Victoria Harpo. Victoria?
Hey, good afternoon, Chairman Coe, Chairman Ralston, and members of the State Board and the Commission. Today I'll be talking to you about the sales program, which you may have heard of some before. So for some of you, it'll be kind of an update, um, on where we're going and where we've been with the program. But it's a seamless alignment and integration of learning support. And it really is a key pillar of the Drive to 55 initiative in that it sets students up for success in higher education. Um, in Tennessee, 75% of students entering community colleges require at least one remedial education course. And for those of those students who have to take a remedial course, the chance of them earning a credential within three years is about 5%. Sales is just one of the numerous ways that we're working to address, uh, the need for remediation in our schools. So sales is really about rethinking remediation. Um, and we're currently working on, you've probably heard more about math, and I'll talk a little bit about math, but there's also an English version out there that, um, is beginning to be piloted. So the program was developed jointly by K-12 and higher ed. It was actually faculty members at Chattanooga State, Community College, and Red Bank High School that came together, um, and developed the program, piloted, had a lot of success, and then came to us and said, "This is something that we have found to be very successful that are meeting the needs of students, so let's try to bring this to more students across the state." A key feature of the program is that it wasn't a one-time interaction between K-12 and higher ed. It's a continuous interaction. You have field coordinators that work for the community college who actually go out to the high schools on a daily or weekly basis as necessary to check in and make sure that that curriculum, um, is being followed, that there, if there are any needs that the students have, that they can be addressed in a very timely manner. So it really is a very tight collaboration between K-12 and higher ed, and I think that's one of the key reasons why they've seen some of the success that they have. What it does, it embeds the, um, Tennessee Board of Regents' Learning Competencies for Remedial Education into the fourth year either English or math course. So students get credit for both the high school and then the college remediation. Um, it's a blended learning environment, so you have some self-paced online, um, work that students do with computers, and that's facilitated by that skilled high school teacher. So it brings the two together. These are students that generally have not had success in a standard math classroom, so we switch up the idea. Let's, let's go at it from a different perspective, because if 11 years really haven't cut it with one method of delivery, let's try something different for these students. And what we're finding is that it's been very successful. Um, so when students demonstrate competency in those five areas, like we said, they'll get credit for their high school course, um, and the remediation at the community college. So sales math, um, excuse me, began in 2012, and like I said, with Chattanooga State and Red Bank High School. Um, and through the expansion efforts, there's now 240 high schools, um, that are participating in the program with all 13 community colleges. So it really, um, does cover the state, though at the moment it does not cover every high school. Um, they are working to, um, provide this program to as many students as possible, but all the community colleges are participating, we just have not covered all the high schools. What we have done, and this is an exciting number, so about 30,000 students were identified last year at their end of the junior year with the ACT as being not prepared for college-level work at the end of their junior year. So what we've done is now we can, we're reaching this year in the 15, 16 school year, 17,000 or over half of those students that have been identified as not college and career-ready based on the ACT they took their junior year. So that's really, we are making a dent, um, in the number of students that need remediation, and we're seeing it, um, in the number of students that are needing to enroll in remediation for math at the community college. Last year, the math, um, in the 14, 15 school year, which was the largest of these years, there was a 91% success rate. To be able to have 91% of the students complete all math remediation that they need and enter college in those credit-bearing courses, I, I can't stress how, what a huge thing that is for students. Not only to walk onto a college campus and know that they are ready, uh, to do that credit-bearing coursework, it saves them time and it saves them money, and they don't get stuck in those remedial courses where we know unfortunately the chances of them getting out are very slim. So, um, sales English, um, there's been a lot of success for sales math, so of course we heard, and I had principals call me, "Okay, so when are you doing sales English?" It's like, well, that's a little bit, um, different to tackle, uh, the math courses versus a course that would cover both the English and the writing, um, competencies that students needed. So there's a pilot going on, again with Chattanooga State and some of the local high schools around there, looking at doing just that. And again, it was, um, English faculty from Chattanooga State and from the local high schools who put together the curriculum that's completely aligned to the current Tennessee standards, so there's no question of whether a student's going to get credit for that English IV course, they absolutely will, while working towards their remediation that they need in the English as well as writing. It's a little different in the blended learning, uh, environment than you have for math, is more self-paced, so your English, because you have to have time for that discussion of literature, um, and the speaking and listening that goes along with those literature standards, um, it's slightly different in that you'll see the math be a little more independent, facilitated by the teacher, slightly different in English just because you have to have some of those communication, um, exercises when you're looking at literature. The program's been highly successful, it's been highlighted by Inside Higher Ed, also by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, as being a really important best practice and means of addressing what is a very serious problem for students, um, and has a large effect on their success in higher education. So, um, with that, any questions?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Edwards.
Why does it work? I think two big things. Um, first, you have the continuous communication between K-12 and higher ed. It wasn't just that you put them at the table once, they talked and said, "Okay, well now, high school teachers, it's your thing, you deal with it." Is that it's the constant collaboration between the two and making adjustments in curriculum to fit particular students. The other thing, it's a different way of teaching, and you have students who have been, like I said, they've been taught for 11 grades in the same way, it's not working. So it flips that on its head, it lets them set the pace, it lets them take tests as they go to demonstrate competency, where they can say, "Okay, I can check that box. I do, I know I've demonstrated that I really can do fractions or decimals or whatever it is in the particular competency." So I think those two working together, that it empowers the student while really having that collaboration between K-12 and higher ed is what helps make it so successful.
Just to piggyback on Mike, and I'm Sarah Haberman, also with the State Board, and thank you, Victoria, for the update. I think this is great to hear more about some of the collaboration between our two areas. Can you put this in the context for our board members, particularly in terms of other remediation efforts like credit recovery, and also just the logistics of how this is administered during the high school time for students? When does this take place? Just a little bit more of some of the logistics.
Sure, so the math course got built into the bridge math course, which we know you have to have the four, the four years of mathematics, so the bridge math course was kind of the natural fit for students, a lot of the times who had already been identified as not college and career-ready or needed some assistance. So that's the course where this actually got built into, was the bridge math course. Um, and then for English, it'll be built into English IV, which they had a little bit less, um, leeway with making sure that those, the English IV standards are, are very particular. Um, but, so it's filled in the regular school day, they usually will go to a computer lab rather than a standard classroom in order to have that online experience and have the, um, coursework be filtered through that medium. But you have a K-12 teacher that is with them the whole time and facilitates their learning. She or he answers any questions that students have. What we've seen in the sales classrooms, though, is, that's really interesting, is you see students working with one another, um, in a way that we don't always see. You have to put students together and tell them, "Okay, it's group work time," and that they're leaning over to the computer and saying, "Wait, what are you doing that is making you successful?" And, and taking the pressure off of students where they don't have to raise their hands and talk to a classroom full of students focused on the board, their, their own computer. They're so much more tech savvy now, um, that this, we're finding is a medium of, of providing those skills to them that we hadn't been able to do before. Yes, sir?
Is there any involvement with the business community? Is this just higher ed and the local school system? You know, we- You know, we're hearing, for these same students, we're hearing a lot of advantages for work-based learning or involvement in the workplace so that the students understand how some of these skills are.
Right, that they are real world, that you do actually use fractions for the rest of your life? Not at this time, no. Right now, it's been devoted primarily to getting them prepared for that post-secondary education and laying that foundation. So not right now, no. Yes, sir.
I'll link back up on Mike's Chris.
Kato Johnson, State Board. I used to be here until they took my pitch off the wall.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Are you able to take best practices from here? You mentioned there are things that have not been working. The things now that we know work, what about best practices we can take and use those down the road?
Well, part of the best practices that we learned from math is what we're applying to English. And that has been kind of our first area to see if we could take those best practices and shift them. And so far, the pilot, which is quite small, but still is successful with the Sales English, is that they were able to cover the curriculum, that having that kind of flipped learning environment is empowering those Sales English students in similar ways that the math did. So right now, that has been our target with where we're kind of going to expand, is with the Sales English to provide that. Something I forgot to mention, when those sales students, and this is available right now only in math, is if they complete those five competencies before the end of their senior year, they can actually start in credit-bearing math courses. So not only can they show up not needing remediation at an institution of higher education, they can show up with credits under their belt. And it happens quite frequently, and these are students who were told at the end of their junior year, "You're not ready for college." And at the end of their senior year, not only are they ready, they actually have credits banked that they can say, "I'm actually ahead of the game."
Tristan Demme, I'm Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs at TBR. One of the things I wanted to make, help board members understand is, so part of what's happening in part of the Sales Program is actually taking about a decade's worth of work in the community college sector and the university sector about understanding how it is that we can do this remediation work more effectively and actually taking that into the high school classroom. So part of the success is really on the back of that work. It's now the case that this is really the other side of a significant amount of reform which is happening in developmental education in the college classroom. So just this last fall, we fully implemented a completely new model of remediation called the prerequisite structure, which actually enrolls those students directly into a credit-bearing class and then provides a significant amount of supplementary instruction that supports them in that class. All the data that we have, and I'll share that tomorrow at the Commission, is that that approach is massively more successful for those students. So we really think that we have all the pieces in place to very much change the, I mean, the history really is, as Victoria said, that these students, they don't go on to graduate, many of them don't even ever go on to even take a credit-bearing math class, let alone complete their degree. But we now believe that we have a structure in place which is going to completely turn this on its head.
Questions?
So Sarah's going to absolutely kill me on this one. But are there techniques, are there skills that would be applicable to put in teacher...
So the, well, so let me talk about the, maybe just to pick up a few other things that I think are really effective here. So one of the things which is very powerful is purpose, that it really is the case that these students understand that they are working, they are learning this for a purpose now. So I'm a mathematician by trade, so I am not saying that mathematics doesn't have a purpose that's an innate sort of natural purpose. Actually, for perhaps a very long time, mathematics has been the solution to most problems. I think now it's the case that many people think that mathematics is the problem, but that's by the by. But it really is the case that these students are going into this class and they understand that by doing this work, that they change their future in a college classroom, and they want to go to college. And that changes the way in which they're learning that material. I think that's a very important piece. I'm not saying that the teachers don't normally try to motivate their work, but this is a different kind of motivation, I think that's piece number one. Piece number two is that inherently the way in which this work is taught is that it's extraordinarily individualized. So we're using learning software that means each particular student is doing problems that try to find, try to help them with skills that they up until now have not been able to master, and each individual student is trying to find solutions to their particular problems. And what's more, when they make mistakes, they get immediate feedback. And I think all that we know about learning science shows that having individualized and immediate feedback that embraces the idea of, yeah, everybody makes mistakes, it's what you do when you make a mistake, how it is that when you get that feedback that says, "Yeah, don't do this, do that next time," and then you get to correct that. That's a very powerful learning structure. That's one of the things which is inherently built in to the way that this learning happens. So I think both of those two things are just perfectly aligned in this particular learning environment. I don't think that those things are absent from the K-12 classroom right now. I think they're really an inherent part of basically every teacher's training, it's just that this happens to be just really on focus here and you can see how well it works.
Thank you. There's my contact information if you do think of some.
All right. Next we'll hear an update on the Tennessee Promise from Emily House.
Thank you Chairman Cope, Chairman Ralston, Dr. Deaton, Dr. Haber, members of the Board and members of the Commission. I will present a very brief update on Cohort 1 of the Tennessee Promise students. These are the students that entered higher education in Fall 2015. In the interest of time, I will go quickly and I will probably not touch on each of the slides that I have and that will be on the screen, but I'm happy to have any conversations or discuss anything at length following the meeting or anytime offline. The objective of this first pass, the Tennessee Promise research, was really twofold, to determine who are the Tennessee Promise students and how does the freshman class in higher education in Tennessee compare to years past? So did Promise even descriptively change what the freshman class looks like in Tennessee higher ed? Many of the Commission members and many of the staff at THEC have seen this slide before. I do want to talk through this very briefly. This timeline begins in November 2014, which is the fall of the senior year of these students. By November 1 of their senior year, students in Cohort 1 of Tennessee Promise needed to sign up for Promise. Approximately 58,000 students signed up for Promise at that time. That reflects about 90% of the public high school seniors and about 80% of high school seniors across the state if you include public and private. So the initial take-up of Tennessee Promise was huge and profound and successful. And if Mike Kraus were here, he would tell you how many miles he put on his car, really stumping and talking about Tennessee Promise. The first mandatory checkpoint was the mandatory meeting that occurred between students and their mentors in the winter of 2015, between the sign-up for, the application closing and the first meeting, we had about 15,000 students drop off. So we had about 43,000 students still eligible for Promise at the time of the first meeting. The FAFSA deadline, students needed to file their FAFSA as of February 15th. At that point, approximately 38,000 students were still eligible. At the time of the second meeting, approximately 32,000 students were still eligible. And at the time of the community service deadline, which was August 1st, approximately 22,000 students were still eligible. Something to emphasize here is that this was a one-and-done kind of setup to the program. If a student missed one deadline, they were no longer eligible for Promise. So those 22,500 students are those students who hit each of those benchmarks. Ultimately, in Fall 2015, so this past Fall semester, about 16,000 students enrolled in community colleges and TCATs and a few four-year institutions that offer sub-baccalaureate programs as Tennessee Promise students. So you can see sort of the survival function or the waterfall of students who took up the program initially, that 58,000, down to about 16,000 who enrolled. That is a success. So if you look at that waterfall, that is not to be interpreted in any way as a deficit of the program. It was never intended that 58,000 students would enroll as Promise students, to be clear about that. So the vast majority of these students enrolled at community colleges, and I lumped in those who enrolled at Austin P. with the community college students just for the sake of simplicity. So the vast, vast, vast majority enrolled in community colleges. About 13% enrolled in TCATs and about 2% enrolled, which are the technical colleges in Tennessee, Tennessee Colleges of Applied Technology, if you're not familiar with that acronym. And about 2% of Promise students enrolled in eligible private institutions. So these are institutions that were offering associates-level programs similar to some of those offered in the public institutions that were eligible for this program. Another research question to dig a little bit deeper into, but which is very interesting to us at THEC, of those who fulfilled all the requirements of Promise, they met the benchmarks and as of August 1, they were eligible to be Promise students, but they did not show up at a community college or a TCAT, where did they go? And so far, we've seen some of them at public four-year institutions. It remains to be seen who did not enroll or who chose to enroll at a private four-year institution or out of state. So there remains to be seen a whole lot about the Promise students very broadly, particularly those who met all the requirements but chose to enroll somewhere else. I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, and again, the Commission members should be familiar with this. What I do want to emphasize is the, are the first two columns, the Tennessee Promise Community College students and the first-time freshman out of high school, that's what my abbreviations there are, FTF is First-Time Freshman out of High School in Fall 2014 who enrolled at community colleges. That is as close at this time to a treatment and control group that we're able to look at, again, very descriptively. And the punchline here is that Promise students on average are slightly, there are slightly fewer students of color, students who are African-American, in the Fall 2015 First-Time Freshman class relative to the Fall 2014 First-Time Freshman class. As well as if you look at the average ACT score, the students who are Promise students are slightly, more highly academically achieving, academically high achieving on the basis of their ACT score. I know the ACT is not necessarily the end-all, be-all of academic achievement, but you can see that the average for Promise students was a 19.1. The average for a First-Time Freshman out of high school in the Fall of 2014 was 18.7. I don't want to spend any time really talking about the financial aid packaging. We are in the process, and I spoke about this about 20 minutes ago, we're in the process of really digging a lot more into what the financial aid package looks like for these Promise students. So how many students are Pell-eligible? How many students received lottery scholarships? How many students received dollars from Tennessee Promise and how many did not, et cetera? So this is very much forthcoming, the bottom of this table here. One of the big punchlines related to Tennessee Promise is the change in enrollment. You can see the first two rows here, that enrollment at community colleges and the TCATs for First-Time Freshmen, so students who have never been enrolled in higher education before, who are then enrolling. First-Time Freshman enrollment is up almost 25% at the community colleges and 20% at the TCATs, which is unprecedented, absolutely unprecedented. For my researchers in the room, I am not trying to assert causality here, we've not done a rigorous enough analysis to say that Tennessee Promise caused this, but I think it would be very naive to say Tennessee Promise had nothing to do with this. On the flip side, the other side of that coin, if you look at the university enrollment, the Board of Regents universities and the UT System universities, the enrollment did go down a little bit, or more than anticipated, I shouldn't say a little bit. The enrollment at the universities did decrease a little bit more than was projected, about eight and a half percent at the Board of Regents universities and about four and a half percent at the University of Tennessee universities. Overall, it was an increase of about 10% First-Time Freshman enrollment in higher education in Tennessee. So there's a lot more conversation to be had about shifting and downshifting for students who could have attended a four-year institution who chose to then attend a less-than-four-year institution in light of Promise. But beyond the shifting, there are additional students coming into the pool as well, which is reflected in this change of 10% in the positive direction. And this just shows by institution, you can see the growth in community college enrollment is pretty profound and it was universal across the 13 community colleges. Of the 27 TCATs, all but one had pretty substantial increases in enrollment, and I know there are some circumstantial issues at TCAT Paris, of which I'm not super familiar, but. And looking at the universities, you can see that the direction is the opposite. So enrollment of First-Time Freshmen at the universities did decline in the Fall 2015 semester. The bump at Austin P. has to do with the fact that Promise students were eligible to use their award at Austin P. to enroll in an associate's degree program, and UT Knoxville is kind of an entity unto itself and doesn't always follow the patterns of the rest of the institutions. Yes, sir.
With a 10% increase overall, how's that compared to previous years? So are more kids going to college, period, as a result of this, and how much more?
Excellent segue, sir.
Alrighty.
So, thank you for that. The changes in the distribution are profound, and they are more profound than where it was initially projected. And by that I mean, there appear to be more students who are downshifting, that may have attended in the past a four-year institution, who chose to take advantage of the program, the Promise program, thereby enrolling somewhere else. But there are more students, it appears thus far preliminarily, that there are more students than just those who moved around. So it looks like there are between 4,000 and 5,000 new entrants. And if that is the case, once we explore this more rigorously, the college-going rate in Tennessee will increase about 5% to 6% percentage points between the class of 2014 and the class of 2015, which is profound. That is a number that's very difficult to move, and if we are able in one year, we as a state have been able to increase our college-going rate by five or six percentage points, that's a big deal. And it's such a big deal, let me demonstrate that for you graphically. So, thank you very much, Mr. Lee, that was a perfect, perfect segue.
You know, I've heard you present before, I've certainly known to wait.
Lot of content here.
But I thought I'd make you look good. And me look dumb.
No, 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 no. So the Y-axis here should be each of the 50 states. Because it's so closely packed, you can't actually see Tennessee, but Tennessee is the red bar that looks like it says Michigan, and that is Tennessee. So relative to the rest of the nation, Tennessee at the moment is slightly below average in terms of the college-going rate. The college-going rate statewide is about 57%. So 57% of high school seniors attend or enroll in a public or private, in-state or out-of-state institution of higher education immediately following graduation. There are, I won't get into this, but there are other ways to calculate that, that's how we do it in Tennessee. So right now, we're slightly below the national average. If we were to bump our college-going rate up five or six percentage points, we would land, that was very anticlimactic because I clicked it the wrong way, we would land here. So we would go from slightly below the national average to much closer to the top, which is really indicative of not only the wonderful work that's happening in Tennessee and this culture of college-going that's growing and evolving, but really the effect of a five-percentage-point gain on a metric that's typically hard to move. One year, yes, sir. I won't spend too much time talking about ACT scores, but the punchline here is that because the distribution of students is changing, the average ACT, which an average only tells you so much, but the average ACT at community colleges and universities is increasing. This is something we need to explore much more fully. But if you look at the community college average overall, the increase was only a tenth of a point. But if you look at some of the movement at some of the community colleges in particular, the individual community colleges, there's substantial growth there year over year, which again is not typical. The same is true with the universities. If you look at both the TBR universities as well as the UT System, the average ACT score continues to increase at the majority. So that is something we'll have much more information about, hopefully before the January 2017 joint meeting, but hopefully we'll have much, much more information to share very soon about that with all of our colleagues. I will stop there in the interest of time. Are there any questions?
I should note, but back to the college go...
Yes. Mississippi, yes, Crystal made a comment about this last time. Crystal, why is that at the top?
I didn't talk about that. Because it's the, so it's those students who go to college who graduated from high school.
That's right.
Mississippi has a very low high school graduation rate. So the students that are graduating from high school are going to college.
So just so that picks up on the mic, Mississippi has a very low high school graduation rate. Those who do graduate from high school often enroll in post-secondary education.
Yes, 70 or 80%.
Thank you. I looked to Crystal because she complained about that last time, too. Yes, sir?
So glad that you would point that out.
This trajectory is awesome, and it really truly is a game changer. Have we modeled the economic impact-
How we pay for the Promise program? Or how we pay for what?
We are expanding our capacity at a, yeah.
Economic impact.
We are expanding our capacity of kids we're serving. What are we going to pay for?
Oh, from the higher education standpoint. So there has been a lot of conversation about operating within the capacity currently from an institutional level, at the program level. For example, if there are too many students who want to do an automotive technology program at a TCAT, which is equipment-sensitive, there are capacity constraints therein. So I will defer to those who work more closely with the systems to talk a little bit, or to Tristan, to talk for a second about how issues of capacity and finance are being dealt with on that end. That's just not really my wheelhouse.
I think I'm going to very quickly defer to Russ. Why don't you go first and then I'll-
Somebody will answer this question for you, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead. So yes, we've modeled this out and really modeled it out over the next decade to understand where it is that we're going, how this marries with the Drive to 55. We have this really plotted out across each institution to know how the growth and how the improvements that we're making in student success will play itself out as far as student population, as far as demands on campuses, as far as infrastructure that we need. So we understand how that unfolds. The challenge, as you say, is, yeah, we know that, how that unfolds, but how that is actually paid for, how that then, how the funds flow from both the state and also from tuition, that is largely still a conversation that's unfolding. Maybe that's a neat place for me to hand over.
Well, that's accurate, I would say, and well, good perspective. There are two things also important, I think, is one is the financial aid profile of the students we're trying to reach and bring in is very different from who we have now. And part of what the challenge, I think, the state has is fulfilling in a need-based aid way their aspirations and their affordability. The students who are probably coming in at 4,000 are probably not high-income students who are, on balance, well-prepared. They probably tend to be on the lower end of the preparation spectrum and probably on the lower end of the income spectrum. Part of this solution, I think, lies, too, in us getting arms around how you bring all the finance tools to bear to solve that problem, not just financial aid, not just the capital and infrastructure. How does the interplay between tuition and state funding work? Because that's not an easy problem to solve. And just last week, actually, we sort of started these conversations. We had these roundtables, actually called "Affording Our Aspirations," to use some of that language. How does the state afford Drive to 55? And with that kind of enrollment response, and that'll probably be duplicated with this next Fall's freshman class and thereafter, how do you pay for all those students who have a different income profile and a different set of needs than what we're used to dealing with? Those are students we have not historically succeeded with at all, and so we have a challenge on our hands, and the state has to figure out, has to come to terms with how it funds that goal and how tuition is part of that solution or not, and how you maintain affordability. Not an easy answer, but one we'll have to get our arms around going forward.
Well, because it's tough doesn't mean we don't do it because uniquely, I don't think- One thing that I would caution is when you're looking at what programs to max out or to look at the market and what- Part of what skills drive- Incredibly important.
Well, yeah.
We don't need a lot of buggy whip manufacturers.
Yeah, you make a great point. And so at least in TBR, we've been going about this in a very holistic approach. On the one hand, as Russ says, it is the case that for us to be able to meet these demands, it means finding ways to be successful with groups of students that we have historically not been successful with, and not just us, actually, no one nationwide has been successful with. And so putting in a suite of different kinds of student success initiatives to try to improve student success wholesale, as well as a larger student population, but also helping that larger student population be increasingly successful. But it's also the case that at the other end, we're also having ongoing conversations with skills panels, with employers, to understand exactly what it is that industry and the market really wants out of the education that these students are receiving, so we really can marry the training that they receive with the demands that they'll need in the workplace. And both need to be happening in concert with one another. It's extraordinarily important.
And as a postscript here, we would be remiss if we didn't also point out that in large part, the solution to Drive to 55 rests not with increasing the recent high school grads, it's adult students who Promise doesn't impact very much, lottery doesn't impact very much. Our financial aid, our policy focus has not tended to look at that type of student. That's where Drive to 55 will be, will succeed or fail with the adult students, and Promise and others don't really address that, and that's its challenge for the state going forward.
Quick question. Bill Trout, State Board, Memphis, Tennessee, and a THEC alumnus in the class of 1978. Your participation picture, this is a terrific report, your participation picture, does it include Takula data of Tennessee students who attend independent colleges in Tennessee?
As Tennessee Promise students, yes, sir.
It does, great.
Yes, sir. Okay, my contact information is here. You guys know where to find me, so anytime, I'd love to talk about Tennessee Promise. So thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Hey, Dr. Haber, and I think the agenda recognizes you for an update.
Thank you, Chairman Cope, and it's great to be with both the commission and the board. We're excited to be here today, and I know personally, I'm excited because last year this time was my first meeting officially as the executive director at the state board, so it's good to have a year behind me, and this is a tremendous state board to work with, so it's a pleasure to be with both boards today. Thank you for the opportunity to present some updates. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Laura Inklad in just a moment to provide some additional information, but as we were talking with Dr. Deaton and his team in preparation for this meeting, we wanted to take an opportunity to highlight a few key pieces of work that the state board has been leading or involved with over the last year and is continuing on in the coming year that really speaks to both the commission's work and the board's work. I think as Chairman Cope opened the meeting by saying, now more than ever in Tennessee, it's so important that we think beyond just K-12, but really the spectrum of K-12 onto post-secondary and college readiness, we have to think broader and bigger than just the K-12 work. So the updates that we're going to highlight today speak, I hope, to both the work of the commission and the board. So we'll start with a brief update of standards review. Our board is going to be getting a lot more detail on this tomorrow, starting at 9:00 a.m., because this is really a milestone week for us in the standards review of Common Core, otherwise known as math and language arts standards in Tennessee. We're going to touch on briefly how that relates to the assessment changes in Tennessee. TN Ready is another big change that we are in the process of making in our state. And then finally, we're also making major changes to the teacher preparation report card, and that's something I think is really of shared interest for both the commission and the board, so we're excited to provide some updates on that. I don't want to, there we go. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Laura now to talk through a little bit more on standards review.
Good afternoon. As Sarah said, my name's Laura Inklad, and I'm the Director of Policy and Research at the State Board of Education. And as Sarah also mentioned, this is a seminal week in our work at the state board on the standards review process. And before I dig in a little bit deeper to some of that information, first, just want to ground the conversation in what standards are and how they're used in our state. So when we think about standards, we're really thinking about the grade level or course level expectations for students. This is the material that students are expected to know and be able to do, the content and the material they're expected to know and be able to do at the end of each grade level or course. It's not the curriculum, it's not any of the resources or the textbooks, those things all come later, and many of those decisions are left up to the local level. But the state board has been charged and statute and has historically approved sets of academic standards in many different subjects. And that process, review process for standards was enhanced this last year through some legislation that was passed by the General Assembly. So last year, last spring, the General Assembly passed a bill that outlined a new, more comprehensive, transparent review process for some of the major sets of subjects in our state, so the math standards, the English-language arts standards, the science standards, and the social studies standards. And that review process is very intricate and has many different layers, but just to kind of capture, I'll cover briefly a few of the key steps in it, but overall, I would just say, you know, to highlight that review process, it's incredibly transparent and involves an unprecedented opportunity for Tennesseans to read the standards, give feedback, and involves more educators in the review process than have been included in previous standards reviews, and includes many different stakeholders in the process. So we feel really strongly about the outcome of this process that our board will be hearing on first reading later this week. But we began the process last fall, the fall of 2014, with the governor's announcement that there would be a standards review process and a public website that would collect feedback from Tennesseans across the state. And so we had a public website open for about six months where we collected more than 131,000 reviews on our current math and English-language arts standards, and had more than 20,000 comments submitted by individuals across the state. We then moved into a period of time where we recruited an amazing group of 47 educators representing both current K-12 classroom teachers, central office supervisors, as well as higher education faculty, to take a look at the enormous amount of public feedback that we received. So this group of 47 educators dug in over the course of several months, reviewed all of the public feedback, and used that along with their own expertise to make a first round of revisions to the standards. They presented those initial revisions to what we call a Standards Recommendation Committee, and at the same time, we also started a second public review period. So that review period began in October. We reposted the new draft of standards for an additional round of public feedback. We held a series of roundtable conversations for educators and parents all across the state and spoke with more than 200 people in person to explain to them some of the changes in the standards and to solicit their feedback. We also engaged with higher education faculty in a review of the standards. We had content area faculty look at both the math and the English-language arts standards and provide both us as state board staff, as well as our Standards Recommendation Committee, with areas of strength as well as areas that could be further improved in the standards. And then finally, we also worked with the Southern Regional Education Board to do an external review of the draft standards. All of that feedback from those different reviews culminated in information that was given to our Standards Recommendation Committee, and that's a committee that is appointed four members by the governor, three members by the Speaker of the House, and three members by the lieutenant governor. And they're charged with reviewing all of the feedback, reviewing the initial draft of standards, and making revisions, and then ultimately a recommendation to the state board about the set of standards that should be approved. And so they worked from August through last week, reviewing the initial draft, reviewing all of the feedback that we received. They attended our roundtables throughout the state. They drafted both a set of recommended revisions to the standards that then went back to our educator committees. They ultimately, the recommendations committee approved that newly revised set of standards and is recommending them for approval to our state board members. And they've also drafted a position statement outlining some of their key beliefs around the importance of implementation and strong implementation for the success of our standards. And I promise, that was actually just the highlights version of the review process. So it has been very comprehensive, very transparent. Many, many Tennesseans have weighed in on this, and we feel really strongly and really positive about the outcome of this process. So in terms of next steps, as I've mentioned, our board will be hearing these standards on first reading at the end of this week. We'll then take the period between first and final reading to collect some additional feedback, determine if any additional, excuse me, recommendations need to be made. And then final reading of those standards will be in April of this year. We'll then enter into a transition or a training year. This will ensure that we've got adequate time to work with the Department of Education to make sure that teachers and school leaders are trained on the new standards, understand the key shifts and revisions, and that also assessments are able to be updated so that they will be aligned to the new standards during the first year of implementation, which will be in the 2017-18 school year. And then we're going to start it all over again, and we're going to start with science and social studies. So the science process is actually underway already, and I won't go through all of these dates in detail, but we'll follow the exact same process, period of public review, educator committee to do an initial set of revisions, a unique standards recommendation committee for each of these subjects, and then a second period of public review before they are recommended to the state board for approval. I'll turn it back over to Sarah to talk a little bit about the TN Ready assessment.
Thank you, Laura. And before I start with the TN Ready update, I just want to underscore a few points that she made. I think it's easy to say, why so much to do about standards? And it is a lot, it's been extensive. I think we feel really good about where we are. But it's worth noting, a lot of what you read in the news about the controversy about social studies or about textbooks or curriculum choices, all of those decisions are made based on the standards that as a state we pass and say, this is what our students need to know and be able to do in a given grade or subject. So it really is the bedrock or the foundation for so many other instructional decisions, including assessments. So it's important to get the standards right, and I think our governor showed real foresight by initiating the charge and the General Assembly by investing additional money and resources. It's important to get the standards right. So it's been a really interesting and insightful process, and yes, we're going to continue with science and social studies, so stay tuned. But TN Ready, again, the new assessment for Tennessee, this is the first year of implementation, and I should preface by saying, this is really the purview most squarely of the Department of Education, our partners in implementation of K-12 education. But I wanted to provide a few updates because, again, this is an important change that we're making as a state, and certainly another thing that's very newsworthy at the moment. So when you hear TN Ready, it's really the new and revised and improved TCAP, but particularly the TCAP tests in math and English-language arts in grades three through 11. So we're not talking about science and social studies assessments, those are also state-required assessments in grades three through 11. TN Ready at this point is just math and language arts. It is a part of TCAP, so the larger assessment suite of state assessments is still TCAP. TN Ready is a part of that. And again, it includes 3-8 achievement tests, grades three through eight, as well as the high school or end-of-course tests for science, social studies, math, and English. So in end-of-course, it does include those other subjects. TN Ready has fewer and better questions, we think, than the former TCAP, and for a few illustrative anecdotes, it's more writing, it's more constructive response. Our former TCAP tests have just been multiple choice, and it's very hard to assess our new standards, even our current standards really require a deeper level of thinking than multiple choice can accurately capture. So it's important to note that the format of these tests is very different, the scoring required is very different. The new test, again, is really designed to assess true student understanding and that depth of understanding. So again, we feel like with this new assessment, we'll be able to better reflect what our students really know and can do in these grades and subjects, which is the intent of our standards. It's also, we believe, a really necessary change. Again, we have made one update to our standards. Our current standards reflect that deeper level of thinking. The revised standards even more so will be rigorous and require deeper order and higher-order thinking. And so having a test that's able to measure those standards is really important and necessary. As we were hearing the other updates previously about higher ed and post-secondary readiness, it's so important that our students graduate from high school ready for the challenge of post-secondary, and so we need a test that's measuring accurately their progress towards that goal. TN Ready really does give us a better picture of what they know and can do, and so it'll help our perspective as a state in tracking our progress towards those post-secondary readiness measures. And finally, again, this goes without saying, but we really do believe that all children in Tennessee are capable of these new standards and these new assessments. It's going to require some continued work with our teachers and leaders to make sure we're all ready to get those students to the level they need to be, but we know that they're capable, and we know that this test is the right way of assessing our real progress towards our ultimate goals as a state. Okay, I'm going to turn it back to Laura for one last quick update, and then we'll take any questions and wrap this up.
So one of the other key areas that our office will be focused on throughout the next year is the teacher preparation report card. And I imagine that many of you in this room are really familiar with this report card. It was a historic report card when first produced. Tennessee was one of the first states to really tie completer outcomes back to preparation programs, and THEC was responsible for the production of that report card over the last several years, and has done an amazing job with that report. And I will say that the state board is charged and statute-
And I will say that the State Board is charged and statute with the production of that report card. So, this year has been a transition year as we take that on, as race the top funding that helped fund that work here at THEC ended, and as we've developed some new, revised some educator preparation policies in which the report card is tied really closely to some of the metrics that we'll be monitoring ed prep programs on via that policy. So, that made for a natural transition point for the report card to come back over to the State Board. However, this year truly was a joint effort. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort to produce this year's report card. And so, that began over here at THEC with a data collection process led by Victoria Harpul, and then transitioned over to the State Board and the Department of Education, who are our partners in doing a lot of the data analysis of that report. And then our team at the State Board of Education did the actual production of the report card and released that, and are now hosting that on our State Board of Education website. And I will say that the 2015 report card is very similar to the 2014 report card. It still covers and reports on some of the basic information about programs and their completers. So, demographic information covers academic information like GPA, things like SAT, ACT of program completers. It also looks at placement and retention data, and then finally reports on completer effectiveness, so looking at their value-added data after they've entered the classroom for their first year of teaching. However, we're really excited about the redesign of this report card in 2016. We feel like it's coming at the right point in time, as I mentioned, with some revisions to our ed prep policy, and the report card has been in its current form or relatively similar form for a number of years now. And that's been really important work, but we're excited to kind of give that a fresh look for 2016. So, we'll be really focusing on transitioning the report card to being our external-facing report, really geared towards a general public audience, including districts and prospective candidates who are interested in entering teacher preparation programs. At the same time, we'll be working with the Department of Education, who is charged with producing annual reports on the effectiveness of teacher preparation programs. And this is really, one of the key revisions I mentioned in our educator preparation policy is these new annual reports. And those will really be geared more towards the education preparation programs themselves, providing them the granular data that they are accustomed to in the current report card, and even more data that they've been asking for for the last couple of years. And so, we're excited to be able to have these two tools, which will be aligned and have the same metrics and definitions, but will really be geared towards two different audiences, and we think that's going to better serve the needs of a variety of stakeholders. And so, we'll be working throughout the next year to do a series of focus groups with districts, education preparation providers, as well as current candidates, just to know more about what information would be useful and helpful for them as they look at a new report card. And we'll also be working closely with the Department around the definitions for the metrics and the things that we'll be reporting to make sure that they're aligned with the annual reports that will be used for programs themselves. And with that, Sarah and I are happy to take questions on any of these key projects.
I know we're short on time, but any questions you have, I know our Board's going to be going into these topics in more detail tomorrow, but...
Does the credential, is that the State Board?
I can start and then please jump in. So, the State Board has the authority to pass sort of the certification requirements and also issue the license for teachers. So, in teacher preparation, the State Board is the author, we have to provide authorization for programs that are graduating students for licensure in Tennessee.
I have a pretty stupid question. If we've moved the TN Ready testing to more narrative writing skills, who grades it?
Stupid question.
And is there a dispute about those gradings?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's, for a number of reasons, going to present some timeline issues for us, especially in our transition year. It's going to meet a delay in our scores. They won't be back until next fall. We're accustomed to getting those in the spring or summer, right, really immediately after a test with a multiple-choice style test. There's different ways that they're scored, but traditionally through the vendor that provides the test itself, they have trained, credentialed, sort of certified scores who are outside of the state of Tennessee. It's done sort of at the test company level. Yeah, good question.
There, just one other comment here. I think that you did a great job of reviewing the standards, and I think that that whole process that we've put in place is, has produced better standards. But I think one of the more important things is that the review process has been so extensive that we've got a tremendous amount of buy-in by, you know, practitioners across the state. And I think that that may be a more important benefit even than the improved standards that we ended up with.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll also say, I think our teachers, especially those that have been involved, they know the standards so much better for having had to go through all of them and make really conscientious decisions.
Big crowd of folks.
Yeah. Yes, Tristan.
Yeah, I wanted to just to pile in on that and really say thank you for the extensive involvement that higher education's had in the construction of these standards. I mean, I know I spent a happy morning going down and taking the test myself, so it's, I mean, it really, what I got is a state secret. But it really has been a wonderful combined effort, and I think I'm much the better for it.
We appreciate the partnership. And I didn't mention specifically, but as you just indicated, on the assessment piece too, higher ed has been instrumental in just assuring that not only are the standards right, but the assessment measuring the standards is going to be the college-ready measure that our secondary institutions need. Yes.
On the standards, and it may be too early, has there been any what you call differential validation among subgroups?
Great question. So, that, I know, is something that's very carefully considered when the assessment questions are being designed and piloted. In terms of standards, that's also a consideration for the standards reviewers, but I think it's best tested when you look at the assessment questions and making sure that those are accurate and fair samples for all student populations. Tristan, do you have more knowledge on sort of the specific sort of bias and various ways that they're...
I know that at least the conversations I've had about the way in which questions were selected, this was one of the very primary concerns, to make sure that all of the questions that were selected really were selected in a way that they were, actually, I mean, this was as far as the English ones go, I mean, Victoria and I were together, when we took this, that, so they were very careful that when the passages were chosen and the questions were chosen, that students, when they came to those passages, didn't need some kind of external outside information to be able to be able to draw the conclusions that they needed to from the passages that they were reading. So, this was very carefully done. I'm pretty impressive, actually.
Thank you.
Okay, now for the annual joint report, Emily House.
Chair, so by my satellite, to use Dr. Deaton's term from earlier, we're at 4:31. So, I will speak very briefly, pass it over to Laura, and we'll get everybody out of here by 4:40. So, what we will talk about very quickly is the joint report between the State Board of Ed and THEC. This is a report that we produce annually, which is intended to speak to pre-K through higher education in Tennessee, how those two entities work together, how they are aligned, how they are compatible. So, as we've spoken a lot in the past hour about the importance of alignment and about the importance of really collaborating from the K-12 space and the higher ed space, and the Drive 55 will really require that. This particular report speaks to the needs of the state and the way that the State Board and the THEC master plans are working to meet the needs of the state, particularly with regard to compatibility between what happens in K-12 and higher education, particularly with regard to high school requirements, but just more generally, how are those two entities aligned, as well as efficiency and how to minimize duplication between the operations of both the agencies and the capabilities of K-12 and higher education as well. The example I give here, and the example in the report is the P-20 data system in terms of efficient uses of data. At this moment, approximately 38% of working-age Tennesseans hold a post-secondary credential, so we have a ways to go to hit 55% in the next decade, which I guess is now nine years because it's 2016 now. So, we do have some growth, and we do have a ways to go. We have miles to go before we sleep, as it were. But the efforts must remain aligned between K-12 and higher ed to really ensure that students who are being incented through financial aid and through better preparation, who are more able to, or more, thinking more concretely about attending higher education, that they are college-ready from the K-12 perspective. So, with that, I will pass it to Laura to talk a little bit about the State Board's master plan. Thank you, Emily. And so, just to build off of what Emily said, I know in the conversation, the questions today, I really highlighted this, but our Board members take very seriously this idea of post-secondary readiness and wanting to make sure that all of our students who graduate from Tennessee high schools are ready to be successful on day one in any post-secondary opportunity that they may choose. And so, in order to ensure that we have a laser-like focus on that goal, we've got several other goals as a part of our master plan, and I will just say that our Board members are going to have an extended conversation about the master plan tomorrow morning at our Board workshop, and will be voting on that master plan on final reading on Friday. So, some of this may change between now and Friday. But are focused on three key goals, the first of which, making sure that Tennessee enters the top half of states on the NAEP assessment, which is our nation's report card, an assessment given to all states by the year 2020. We've made great progress in that assessment, but still have a lot of work to do. Also, making sure these two next goals are really focused on that readiness piece, making sure that our students are achieving an average ACT composite score in Tennessee of 21, and that all of them are able to go on to post-secondary opportunity, be successful, and then ultimately earn that post-secondary credential. And in order to do this, we've got four key strategic priority areas in our State Board master plan. And underneath each of these priority areas, you'll see a couple key policy levers. So, these are the things that we are focused on this year in 2016 to help ensure that we are actively working towards those strategic priority areas. The first of which is high-quality school options. And so, our State Board is the appellate body for charter schools in the state, so schools that are denied by their local LEA, the State Board does a de novo on-the-record review of their charter application, and in some cases can ultimately authorize a school. And so, the State Board, this fall, heard six appeals and ultimately chose to authorize two schools, which will be opening in the 2017-18 school year and the 2018-19 school year. They're also focused on the rules and regulation-making of the individualized education accounts. That's a program that allows student, or parents who have students of particular disabilities to access state and local funds to pursue other services and treatments for their children. The Great Teachers and Leaders Strategic Priority, I've also talked briefly about the teacher preparation report card. That's a chief policy lever underneath that priority area. We're also working to implement the revised educator preparation policy that I spoke about. And then finally, the State Board of Education also hears any issues of teacher misconduct and takes that role and that licensed discipline issue very seriously. With high standards and quality measures, you've also heard a lot about the standards review process, and for our Board members, you'll get to your even more tomorrow, but that's a key, key aspect of our strategic plan. We're also working to take a close look at grading policies and practices throughout the state and anticipate making some policy revisions in that area. And then finally, public engagement and oversight is another key strategic priority area for our Board in 2016. This includes making sure and helping our Board members to become really plugged into their communities, meeting with stakeholders on a regular basis, and that's work that really has begun a lot throughout the last year. We're also working to do a comprehensive policy audit and then making sure that we've got clear information around our budget publicly posted for anyone in the public to see. And I know that was fast, but I'll turn it back over to Emily to talk about the THEC master plan. Dr. Deaton mentioned a few minutes ago, when we were talking about the college-going rate, that achieving the Drive 55 cannot happen just looking at recent high school graduates enrolling in higher education and completing higher education. So, there are three key populations that THEC identifies in our master plan, and again, many of our commissioners have heard this a number of times. Those populations are adults, low-income students, and students who are academically underprepared. So, I will absolutely not go into the detail of all of these initiatives, but they are outlined very clearly in both the joint report and the THEC master plan, which we have many, many copies of, if anyone would like a hard copy. But there is a lot being done to reengage adults, to really ensure that low-income students have the resources they need. I would like to point out that Tennessee Promise is not limited to low-income students, but it is a lever to provide a bit more affordability to students who may be low-income, as well as those who are academically underprepared. We spoke already about sales and the co-requisite model. Another piece of the THEC master plan has to do with alignment beyond what we've been talking about in here, which is the K-12 higher ed alignment. This is the higher ed and workforce alignment. We can learn a lot about trends and what's going on statewide using the P-20 data system, which includes data from K-12 higher education and the Department of Labor. So, we can see a lot more about what's going on beyond higher education. When students are graduating, what types of degrees are they earning? What types of jobs are they getting? Are they leaving the state? Are they staying in the state, et cetera? I presented earlier on the Labor Supply and Occupational Demand Report that THEC produces annually, which is just one example of the many resources talking about this alignment between degrees that are being produced and the actual needs of the workforce. The EdutrendsTN.com website, if State Board members are not familiar with that, that's a very useful resource that discusses this issue. And Kurt, who may have stepped out, or is maybe still here, spoke earlier about the LEAP grant program, which aligns education in the needs of local workforce. Any questions? It is 4:39. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Emily. Thanks for the report. That concludes our meeting. I appreciate everyone being here, and good luck with the balance of your meeting.
Let's start at 7:00 or 7:30.
Yeah, that's right.